Recording in progress. Good evening, Los Altos. It's the powerful gavel. Good evening, Los Altos. Right. So I'm going to call to order this meeting of Tuesday, January 27th. City Clerk, would you establish quorum?
Councilmember Daley.
Here.
Councilmember Flecker.
Here.
Councilmember Liang.
Here.
Vice Mayor Weinberg.
Here.
Mayor Meadows.
Here.
We have a quorum.
Thank you very much. So Councilmember Daley is going to lead us in the pledge last night. I mean, tonight, sorry. And he was really good last night. Okay, so we had no closed session this evening, so we have nothing to report out about closed sessions. So now I'm going to ask my colleagues whether anyone has any changes to the order of the agenda, not counting consent. I'm not sensing any changes, so we're going to go ahead and move on. So I want to start this evening with a comment on some exciting breaking news I got today, this afternoon for that matter. And it really would fall under informational items, but we have such a big crowd and I don't want anyone to miss this news. And so I should get on with it, right? So I called our city manager earlier. I said, "I'm calling you," which means it's either really bad news or really good news. And he said he was ready to pack and vacate his office. I said, "No, it's really good news." So you know what that is? We Assemblymember Berman reached out to me this afternoon, and the state passed their budget today, and in that budget is half a million dollars for our EOC, Emergency Operations Center. So, City Manager, I don't know if you want to thank those who filled out the application and a fine job they did too, or add anything to that?
We're just really appreciative for Mr. Berman and getting it in the budget.
Can I add one thing to that?
Of course.
We also got $200,000 for solar streetlights.
Yay. In the state budget as well?
Yes.
Okay, all right, well, okay, party time.
I'll add to it because I heard this news from Sacramento as well. There's one more, there was a third item that will benefit our community. CSA, which is the Community Services Agency, they were granted $1.5 million. So cheers for the city.
Well, all right, maybe I should adjourn while we're on a roll. All right, so now is the time, and I don't have any speaker cards, but we will take public comments on items that are not otherwise on the agenda tonight. I don't have any speaker cards. If you want to speak, do fill out a card. I'm not sensing anyone here in chambers. City Clerk, are you? Okay, so this is an item not on the agenda. All right, so you can come up and then would you please fill out a speaker card after you've finished speaking? And City Clerk will do three minutes. Oh, so are you speaking as one or are...
Yeah, we're doing, yeah, as one.
Okay, so you're speaking as one, so you're going to share three minutes?
Yeah.
All right, three minutes. And please introduce yourself, or at least tell us, give us a clue. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Sydney Shen, and these are my two siblings, Oliver and Nori. We respectfully request the City of Los Altos to sponsor the Santa Clara County Sheriff's Search and Rescue Fund Run. The Santa Clara County Search and Rescue is composed of volunteers, some residing in Los Altos as well as Los Altos Hills. They provide a free service to all cities in Santa Clara County, including Los Altos. The search and rescue team's main function is to find the lost. There are many different types of search and rescue teams, some including the cadavers and avalanche dogs. But the one most relevant to Los Altos is the K-9 unit as well as ground searchers. And here we have an example of a K-9 unit, Sofia and Leah, as well as two ground searchers, Jen and Sofia. There's also wilderness and urban, but since Los Altos is urban, that's like the main type of searches that they do here, and that's for the elderly. Some may have Alzheimer's or dementia as well as young children. Now I'm going to pass it on to Oliver.
It's important to make this fun run happen because it will raise awareness of our free service of the search and rescue team. It will also, the team out there will help teach the people of what to do when lost. Three, it will bring the community together. Four, it encourages exercising. And five, to have fun.
We are in communication with the Los Altos Police Department regarding this event, and we are hoping that the city council can waive the fee of $1,567.50. Through the special resolution in Chapter 9.25.090, it allows Los Altos to sponsor special events that provide benefits to the community. We'll send a proposal and details for the fun run to the city council members, but we also wanted to just let you guys know beforehand.
If the city sponsors this event and waives the event fee, we hope to have the community join us in a fun run around Los Altos to raise awareness of the search and rescue's free service. My siblings and I held a search and rescue awareness event last year, and it was very successful. It was even published in the Los Altos Town Choir. Thank you for listening.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you very much. Would you please fill out a card then and give it to the city clerk so that she has the information? Oh, you have the card, okay, good, perfect. And by law, we can't take action on any agenda items in this section because it was not agendized, but we can talk about it in future agenda items. So thank you so much.
Quick question, Mayor. How many miles is this fun run? Or you can come to the microphone, please.
So we're not 100% sure yet, but we're thinking 3.1 miles, which is a 5K.
Recording in progress.
Yeah. Yeah, we think 5K.
Thank you.
So thank you, and please do make sure you send us the information, and that would be good. All right. So I don't see any other comments in chambers, and there are no hands up online. Okay, so we will close public comment for items not on the agenda. So we're going to move on to special items. And the first item is to have a proclamation recognizing July as Parks Make Life Better Month. And we have a special guest to read the proclamation. I do have it here, and I'll come down and join you. Do we have the microphone? Yes, we do. And this is Emily Hernandez, and after she reads the proclamation, then we will introduce her in more detail. I'll come down with you.
All right, Emily, so the microphone is on. I'm going to give that to you, and I'll also give you the proclamation. If you prefer to stand there, that works too. Go ahead.
Let me give you the proclamation.
Is this on? Are you sure?
Oh, yeah.
Okay. Whereas parks and recreation creates memorable experiences and promotes physical, emotional, and mental health and wellness through organized and self-directed fitness, play, and activity for all ages. And whereas parks and recreation supports the economic vitality of communities by partnering with local businesses and nonprofits and profiting a variety of free community events. And whereas parks and recreation fosters engagement and social cohesiveness in communities by celebrating diversity, providing spaces to come together peacefully, modeling compassion, promoting equality, connecting social networks, and ensuring all people have access to its benefits. And whereas parks and recreation strengthens community identity by providing facilities and services that reflect and celebrate community character, heritage, culture, history, aesthetics, and landscape. And whereas parks and recreation sustains and stewards our natural resources by protecting habitats and open spaces, connecting people to nature, and promoting the ecological function of parkland. And whereas the residents of Los Altos benefit from the wide range of parks, trails, open spaces, fields, tennis, and pickleball courts, great facilities such as the Los Altos Community Center and Redwood Grove Nature Preserve, and events like Family Fun Days and Summer Concert Series are provided by the Los Altos Parks and Recreation Department. And whereas the city council urges all its residents to recognize the importance of equitable access to local parks, recreation, trails, open space, and facilities for the positive development of our Los Altos community. And...
Now therefore, I, Sally Meadows, Mayor of the City of Los Altos, and on behalf of the entire Los Altos City Council, do hereby proclaim July as Parks Make Life Better Month. So, so thank you to Emily. Tell us a little bit about yourself, and then I'm going to have you introduce your father.
So I'm Emily, I'm 10 years old, and I'm going into fifth grade. I like doing a lot of drama classes, and I enjoy like sometimes coming to my dad's work and just being here at the Parks and Recreation Community Center. That's just really fun. Okay, well, my dad is a Parks and Recreation Development Manager.
Director.
Director! Dang. I don't know, I think, sorry.
And he's a good guy.
Uh huh, very.
All right, all right, thank you.
Thank you, Emily. Did you want to do a photo op, or you wanted with the family? Thank you, Emily.
Okay, so I have one more special item. It's not on the agenda, it's in honor of Roy Lave. The heart of this community is our people. We lost a revered friend, neighbor, mentor this past Thursday, June 22nd, when former mayor and longtime community volunteer extraordinaire Roy Lave passed away. Many people have observed that Roy brought out the best in them. Let's reflect on that best, on that best self that Roy kindled in each of us. Let's contemplate how we might emulate him to bring out the best in each other. We will observe a moment of silence now to honor Roy and to appreciate the best that he inspired in each of us. Thank you. We will continue to remember and honor Roy and all he and Penny have done for our community. Tonight, we simply offer our love and compassion to Penny and the Lave family, and thank them for sharing Roy with us, his friends and his community so generously all these many years. We will miss him. Thank you all. So now, we're going to move on to consent calendar. And I'm going to welcome public comment, if any, on the, uh, yeah, we'll bring it to council in this moment. So first, we're gonna ask if anyone has public comment on all the items on the consent calendar.
Mayor, I think, um, if possible, I think we need to make it clear that, like, even if items get pulled, if they were to speak on anything on consent, they need to make it clear that there's, because I think when...
Yes, that's a good point.
Because if we're gonna pull an item, people are expecting that.
Right, so let me clarify.
They get to speak again.
Yes, all right. So your chance to comment on consent items, whether they're pulled or not, is now. And so if anyone has a comment on any of the items, number two through fourteen from the public, your time to comment on any or all of those items is now. Okay, so I have, I see no speakers in chambers, and I'm not seeing any, uh, online attendees with their hands up. Okay, so now I will move to my colleagues and see if anyone wants to pull anything. Vice Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. I would like to pull item number thirteen. I, I just wanna make some clar, propose some clarifications to the resolution.
Okay, uh, do you think that it needs to be pulled to, um, make those clarifications? Or is it a brief enough to do without pulling, and you can make them right now? How many are there?
Just, just one.
Oh, well then, let's just...
No, actually, I was gonna pull it too.
I was gonna pull it too.
So was I. Everyone's gonna pull thirteen. Thirteen.
No, no.
I was planning to pull thirteen.
Oh, I get, I got my numbers correct. I missed out. So I was gonna pull eleven and fourteen.
All right, so let me first ask thirteen, since the vice mayor started. Do you have a simple comment on thirteen, um, council member Flagler?
So it's not comments, it's questions?
Okay, so let's just pull it. All right, so we're going to pull, um, item thirteen. Uh, and council member Liang, you...
Eleven and fourteen.
And do you have a simple clarification that you can ask on eleven and or fourteen?
Um, well, fourteen, because, um, when we talk about this agenda item that came before us, we talked about having all, um, videos, I mean, all our videos, um, kept. But I wanted to talk about it because in review of section four, I think for the ease of the public, as well as myself, I wanted to see if we can make sure we amend the norms to make council recordings, since we're gonna keep our recordings included as a record of the council minutes to supplement the city clerk's report. I think after this last meeting in identifying some of the errors in our minutes, I think it would be great if there was a line that, um, made it clear that people can review the minutes. And I've noticed that other city councils have included the...
Okay, so let me, um, check with my colleagues. I'm hearing a proposal, I don't know that, um, it has to go in the norms. Uh, city clerk, I think you had a suggestion with how to accommodate this request, if council agrees that we don't have to pull the item, or a city attorney?
Yeah, we're, we're required by law to keep the video and the minutes permanently. So we don't really, I don't think we need to amend the norms for that.
Well, I'm saying that, I understand that, we are required to, um, to keep it. But I would like to have it, like, in our minutes, we also have the link with the video. That I think would be very helpful, because I think if you have the video included, that is very clear.
So the council member is asking to have a link to the video of the meeting included in the minutes. City clerk, is that something that's easy to accommodate and doesn't even require necessarily going in the norms?
Yes, I would suggest, though, that if we, um, if that's the direction from council, that I can insert a link to the YouTube video. However, I do wanna notate on the minutes when I insert that link somewhere near there, that that link, um, our minutes are kept forever, and so that link may not be forever. And so I do want to notate for future residents who look at these minutes, say fifty years from now, if YouTube does, no longer exists, that, um, that link may not be active. So it's active as of 2023, present day.
Okay, so we have a proposal, um, and the city clerk has offered a solution that doesn't involve amending the norms. Uh, do my colleagues support the amendment that the minutes would have a link to our video, um, meeting video? Looks like you have support on that, so, so you have direction, right?
So we can put fourteen back on.
Yeah, so fourteen stays on, that was exactly where I was going with this. Okay, and, uh, number eleven, you, uh, is it a quick clarification, or is it a discussion that you wanna have?
Well, it might be a discussion, I'll, I'll tell you why I pulled it, and then you can see. So it was, I pulled it because I felt that we're talking about the path and, uh, you know, enhancements and improvements, and I thought it was appropriate time that if we wanted to upgrade the fountain, instead of tearing up the area again in the future, this would be the time to, um, talk about it. And so I just felt that, um, it is important for us to make sure we can continue to provide clean drinking water for the pedestrian and cyclist. And if people needed to see what that current fountain looks like, I have a photo, and I can send it to them, or if anybody's seen the fountain on Hetch Hetchy, they could understand.
So let me, um, ask for clarification from the city manager, because the report was pretty clear that we cannot do that right now. City manager, you hear the...
The, uh, the encroachment permit from SFPUC allows us to maintain, uh, the drinking fountain that's in place. Once it reaches end of life, we are able to, uh, apply for another encroachment permit. The, it sounds like, reading between the lines, that they don't necessarily want that drinking fountain in that location, because it's on top of their pipe. Uh, we could potentially, as part of the project, look and see if there is a location further away from the pipe on city property. We'd, we'd be happy to do that as part of the project if council wants us to.
And that's what I wanted was...
Okay, so do we need to pull this item to have that discussion, then? It sounds like, it sounds like we do, or is that even agendized?
It's not agendized. I'm, I'm telling council, we're happy to look at it, we got the information from SFPUC today.
Okay, so, um, we can bring it up during future agenda items. Are you then okay with, uh, in keeping item number eleven in the consent? Okay, all right, good, so we have, uh, number thirteen is, uh, pulled?
Just clarification, please. So city manager, if we gave you direction, could we do it at this time, or do we need to do it at future agenda?
I, I think, right now, I'm happy to investigate it. I, I don't know, it depends on the results of that investigation, if it has to come back.
Okay, so we'll keep it for future, thank you.
All right, so, um...
And then we'll put it back on.
Okay, so eleven and fourteen will stay in, so we are pulling number thirteen. I'm going to put number thirteen after number nineteen. So we'll do eighteen, nineteen, thirteen, and twenty. So then, could I have a motion, unless we have any other items to discuss or pull? So, um, vice mayor is, oh, okay.
Are you gonna make a suggestion?
No, I was gonna make a motion.
Oh, I imagine, mayor, just a suggestion. I imagine, um, some of the individuals who may be here on thirteen would also be here on seventeen. So would you consider putting thirteen after seventeen?
Um, okay. Yep. All right, seventeen, thirteen, eighteen, nineteen. Those are your lucky lottery numbers for tonight. All right, can I have a motion for the consent calendar?
Madam Mayor, I move that we approve the consent calendar, items two through twelve and fourteen.
Do I have a second? Oh, second, uh, vice, uh, mayor second.
Council member Daley?
Yes.
Council member Flagler?
Yes.
Council member Liang?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Weinberg?
Yes.
Mayor Meadows?
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right, thank you. So moving on, uh, to the public hearing, the first one, uh, which is an appeal of a planning commission's, uh, decision, is, uh, the, the, uh, appellant is actually not here tonight, and has requested that we continue this item to September 26th. Before I ask my colleagues to make that motion, I want to give, if anyone's here in the audience or online and wants to speak to that item, I will take public comment on the appeal for 57900 Arboretum Drive, um, being aware that we are going to make a motion to continue to a date certain. I don't have any speaker cards for this item, and I, oh, uh, city attorney, yes.
And if, if you don't speak tonight, you can always speak at the continued item date, or if you speak tonight, you'll be able to speak again. But we just, in case anyone came to the meeting and wanted to address this item, and you may be out of town, we would wanna receive your comments, so it would be a fair hearing.
Okay, I'm not seeing any speakers here or online. So we are not going to open that public hearing, and I'm gonna ask for a motion to continue this item to a date certain, September 26, 2023. Vice Mayor.
Move to continue the hearing until September 22, 2023.
Second.
Council member Daley?
Yes.
Council member Flagler?
Yes.
Council member Liang?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Weinberg?
Yes.
Mayor Meadows?
Yes.
Motion carries. And to clarify, um, it's September 26, 2003, 2023.
Yeah, September 26, 2023, okay. I didn't, all right, so moving on to our next public hearing, this is the second, um, time it's showing up. It's the adoption by reference of the 2021 IPMC code with certain, certain local amendments, and finding that the ordinance is exempt from CEQA. Staff, do you have anything you would like to say?
City staff doesn't have anything additional, um, after the last hearing, just for further clarity. Um, since this is a little bit, um, uncommon, because we only do this about every three years, is, um, when you adopt by reference, you do the public hearing consecutively for the, um, introduction and adoption. Uh, so that's why it's opening versus just waving and, um, adopting it under consent. So if there is a member of the public, they can make that comment. Um, and if the members of the council have questions, I'm available to answer those at this time.
Okay, do any of my colleagues have questions? Not seeing any, so I'm going to, oh, do we have some questions, staff? No, okay, so I'm going to open the public hearing. I don't think I have any speaker cards on this item, I have a lot of speaker cards. They've all used different ways of describing their items. Um, so I'm not seeing anyone in chambers who wants to speak on number sixteen. Uh, if anyone online wants to speak with about number sixteen, please raise your virtual hand. And if you have devices on, please mute them or turn them off. All right, so I'm not seeing any speakers here in chambers or online, so I'm gonna close the public hearing. Do my comment, do my colleagues have any, uh, comments for discussion, or can I have a motion?
Vice Mayor?
Madam Mayor, I move that the city council adopt an ordinance of the city council of the City of Los Altos, amending Title 12 of the municipal code by adding chapter 12 dot 72 to adopt by reference the 2021 International Property Maintenance Code, published by the International Code Council, and waive further reading.
And I'll second that, Madam Mayor.
Thank you.
Council member Daley?
Yes.
Council member Flagler?
Yes.
Council member Liang?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Weinberg?
Yes.
Mayor Meadows?
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right, thank you. So we're going to move on to discussion item number seventeen, and our city manager is going to open up this item for us, correct, city manager?
Uh, yes, Mayor. So I'm gonna turn it over to, um, our library folks in just a second here. Uh, they're gonna give a, a PowerPoint presentation that outlines, uh, very nicely the, uh, need the library has, uh, the concept of the patio, all the benefits, uh, that that would bring to the community and to the library. Uh, a lot of the public comment we've received on this to date is about the design, uh, or the location, uh, or about, um, specific placement. And I'm encouraging people to, to focus on the concept at this point. There's, the design has to go through, assuming council is interested in a patio, uh, through design review. Depending on what the application package looks like when it's received, it would have to receive various approvals from different commissions and potentially the city council again. Uh, so when, when we hear the concept tonight, uh, we encourage the, the public to focus on, um, the need of the library and the potential solution, and then know that if the city council would like to move forward with this, uh, we would engage, uh, the multiple stakeholders and have a public process to go through the, um, variety of concerns that have come up through public comment. And with that, I'm gonna turn it over to the library.
Perfect. I'm not the cute children that always have to follow. Um, good evening.
Raise it a little bit more so we can hear you, thank you.
Better?
All right, good evening, Madam Mayor and honorable city council members. I'm Jennifer Weeks, I'm the county librarian and the director of the Santa Clara County Library District. And I'm here tonight, um, with your Los Altos community manager, um, Rose Beza, to discuss a really special opportunity for the library to partner with the history museum, the city, and the Los Altos Library Endowment to create a unique public space to benefit your community and highlight your historic orchard here in Los Altos. So the library district is really honored to serve your city with your library services. According to the 2022 Library Journal Index of Public Library Services, our library district, your library district, holds the number two place in the nation and is rated a five-star library. And while the Los Altos Library is the third busiest in the county system, it's the oldest facility and the second smallest. In 2019, there were over 320,000 visits to your library, almost a million items checked out. People of all ages, 23,641 of them, came to attend 599 programs, including storytimes, innovative speaker series, and conversation clubs. These programs are always free and open to all, though limited spaces affect the attendance. Santa Clara County Library District strives to connect your residents to the library, meeting their needs for diverse resources to support lifelong learning. And today, we're proposing a special space to make Los Altos Library more welcoming and accessible to your community. Some months ago, a very generous Los Altos Hills resident approached the la, the Library Endowment with their wish to make a su, a very sizable impactful donation. So with this incredible gift... So with this incredible gift, the library sees the chance to achieve several key objectives that benefit your residents. Number one, help the city realize the goals of your Orchard Commons Committee, which aligns so well with the project, which includes welcoming your residents to enjoy the Los Altos Heritage Orchards as an inviting community outdoor space. Promote your innovative agricultural heritage through education, providing this loving library space. Enhancing support of community groups via dynamic intergenerational and intercultural programs. Additionally, the opportunity to partner with local organizations to offer events that educate and inspire your residents. And finally, evolve the aging library facility to meet community needs with more accessible and safe outdoor spaces. We are very excited about this opportunity to create this unique space. And now I'd like to ask Rose to provide more details on the proposed concept.
Thank you, Jennifer. Can everyone hear me okay? Okay, so thank you, Madam Mayor and honorable city council members for your time this evening. With the meaningful donation to the library and full funding, this patio project was inspired to enhance the library experience for the community while highlighting the historic orchard. We are very passionate about providing this outdoor space for the community because it meets community needs, it enhances library experiences, and it creates many opportunities for potential partnerships. One of my highlights of working on getting this conceptual design to you today is learning so much about the historic orchard and all the exciting opportunities we could provide to this community. So I remember the first meeting I had with Jane when we walked the patio space. I was amazed and excited by how much knowledge she had to share with me about how orchards work, how we could protect them, how much care they need, and how much education we could provide to the youth in this community. It also became very clear that the patio space highlighting the orchard aligns perfectly with the goal of the Orchard Commons Committee and the Santa Clara County Library District Strategic Plan. Specifically, while maintaining the quality of the historic orchard, we can provide intergenerational and multicultural programming to members of all ages. So these are some highlights from the two thousand eighteen Los Altos Library Needs Assessment. Through that assessment, we learned people of all ages come to the library for both solo and collaborative activities. Program meeting space is in high demand, and the library is a gathering space. With this patio space, we really feel confident that we can meet the needs highlighted. This photo, I love this photo, and this is thanks to our wonderful Heidi. She's our children's supervising librarian who planned this program. And this is from a recent program, and you could see people are standing outside looking in to the library to watch this program. And ironically, that's the space we would like to propose the patio. So how wonderful would it have been to have that indoor-outdoor space for the community to meet those needs and provide that space? You know, imagine coming to the library to be able to, you know, the kids are excited and they want to attend a program, and we have to tell them, I'm sorry, we're at capacity. You know, the fire marshal has a capacity. So the staff are doing a great job of managing it, but we would like to make it a better experience for the community, and there's definitely a need there. So, um, let's see. In addition to increasing capacity at popular programs, like in the previous photo, I'd like to share some other opportunities that could be made possible with the library patio project. This includes inclusive programming, a safe outdoor space, and flexible space for all ages. In addition to that, we could provide new experiences for children and families while highlighting the historic orchard. The next two slides are conceptual outlines of the library patio parameters. You'll see there's an entrance from the orchard room and from the children's room. The reason for this is to have multiple access points because if we have a program going on in the orchard room, patrons can access the patio from the children's room as well. So that won't impact the availability to the patrons and to the community. Another conceptual design. And you'll see kind of, these are the conceptual parameters that we're, library parameters were proposed, or that we conceptualized. For, and as you know, we have a very supportive library community. And I'd like to highlight the support we've received so far from the library commission, the library endowment, the Friends of the Los Altos Libraries, the History Museum, and Orchard Commons Committee, and of course, our wonderful library patrons. And we're very fortunate to have letters of support that were attached in our packet from these support groups. In addition to current support, the patio project provides opportunities for building community partners. This includes Greentown, Master Gardeners, LASD Living Classrooms, LASD Art Docents, and the Garden Club of Los Altos, but there are many more possibilities that may not be listed here. And in the next few photos, I want to show you how other libraries in our district have successfully added outdoor spaces to benefit their communities. This is the Gilroy Library. This is a patio from their children's area, adding square footage and usable flexible space for programs, reading, relaxing, and play. Cupertino, newly updated and expanded Cupertino patio and community rooms. As you could see in the image on the left, the glass walls can open completely from the program room to the patio to expand flexibility, space, and the use of both rooms. This is a picture of the Saratoga Library Patio. As you may know, Saratoga is also one of the three heritage orchards in addition to Los Altos and Sunnyvale. This patio is a wonderful space for residents to relax, read a good book, enjoy fresh air, the orchards, and the beautiful California weather. Another picture, the photo on the right shows a patio from the orchard. The city of Saratoga chose to incorporate a lot of greenery, but as you could see, the location lends itself to the stunning views of the orchard. Next steps, with approval, we anticipate the next steps to this, for this project. And I'd also like to end with my favorite quote from Library Journal that truly shows how a library outdoor space is beneficial to the community. So outdoor spaces allow for libraries and their partners to invest in the health and wellness of communities, connect residents to library resources, and enhance literacy. Great outdoor spaces provide opportunities for libraries to showcase their capacity, to strengthen communities, and be true placemakers inside and out. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you both. So I would like to start with any questions from council of Ms. Weeks or Ms. Beza? Who would like to go first? No questions? Go ahead, Councilmember Liang.
Okay, I have questions. So... I guess I would have questions of staff, but I'll have questions for you first. What is the current square footage of the orchard room?
That I don't know off the top of my head, but I could look that up for you.
And then with addition, what would be the total square footage that you would hope that orchard room and extension to be?
The, the proposal is seven thousand seven hundred square feet, including transitional space.
Yes, I read that. So how, okay. At the special meeting of April twentieth, twenty-twenty-three, the presentation approximated the patio project at six thousand one hundred square feet. How did it expand to seven thousand seven hundred square feet now?
So at that time, we were, it was, the, the proposal of the parameters has changed as we've learned more and as we've developed partnerships. So as we worked with the professionals, we learned that the square footage that is in the proposal today is seven thousand seven hundred square feet. I, I don't know, do we have more details?
So I want to understand if the library has a separate air conditioning unit for the orchard room?
The HVAC for the whole building is connected through one or two units, I believe, but it's not controlled separately, it's all controlled together.
So if they open up, you know how you want to open it up like that? When you have a function and when you have the wall of doors open, will the air conditioning in the whole library be turned off?
We haven't looked that far. I think we're still at the concept phase, but that's something we could consider when we get to the, you know, more concrete design.
So would the library consider utilizing the current outdoor seating fountain? Or, and not go into the boundaries of the orchard? Would you consider that?
I think that's all still up to decision. You know, this is the proposal, so there are, I think, a lot of changes that could and would be made, but this is our proposal based on the needs and the partnerships that we formed.
Okay, and then will the patio space be available for reservations like the orchard room now?
Potentially, yes. The idea was the patio space will be available during all library hours. And so that why, that's why we have the two access points, so patrons can. So if, for example, we have a, a program in the orchard room, patrons aren't restricted to not be able to access that patio space. They could still enter from the children's room. It's not because they would disrupt the orchard room program otherwise.
And then the other question I'd have for you is, why are we putting a number if you're saying that this is conceptual and we're not definite and we're... Why are you putting the square footage if it's preliminary and we're still not sure of the design yet?
I think we have to start somewhere is kind of where I was getting out of it and when working with, with Jennifer and the professional contractor is, you know, this was the, this was the square footage we were looking at that would allow us to have the two multiple access points and minimally, you know, go into the orchard, I think, to the orchard space, while still incorporating and highlighting the orchard.
And then what part of the planning process involves, I don't know, maybe this might be for staff, so maybe let me ask my other question. Have you considered putting the patio or additional space, considered retrofitting or modifying architecturally to make provisions to have a patio on the roof?
On the roof?
Yeah, that way it wouldn't encroach on the, the orchard.
I, I believe.
Fountain area.
Um, I believe. I believe when there was the new library development, the NCLA redevelopment, we were told the building isn't structurally fit to add to the top of it, from what I've been told. So I don't think that would be an option, but we could certainly look into it.
Yeah, so that's why I was asking if it could be retrofitted or modified. And then... And I was just wondering because, I guess somewhere I heard that the, it's the, my understanding that the original intent and request of the donor was to provide solar panels, which would enable the library to be a clean energy site, which is very noble ambition. So how have we evolved into a building project that may, you know, that has evolved to this today?
Well, the, as you know, the library, we serve the community, and this is to meet the needs of the community. And, you know, we had this donation, we have the funding, and it brings, you know, more space to the library and enhances the library experience for the community.
Okay, and then I don't know if you could answer this, but maybe staff might need to answer that, is what part of the planning process involves the knowledge and expertise of historic preservation and city land use in accordance to our local government status? So that might be a staff question.
She's asking about the local government status. We're aware of that, and that really isn't a CEQA issue, I would say. It's just that we are a member of it, but we really haven't taken advantage of that, I don't think, for any grants. Have we gotten any grants through that? But it's not a CEQA issue.
I can understand it's not a CEQA issue, but it's, it's a, just, I'll address that later. Okay, thank you, those are my questions.
Thank you.
Councilmember Flagler.
Thank you, Mayor, and Rose and Jennifer, thank you so much for your presentation. Really nice to see both of you in person. And of course, what an opportunity we have before us with this generous donation from the Chow family. I do want to pick up on the size, the conceptual size that's before us. And I am curious how you arrived at that size. And the reason I'm asking is, as you may have seen, we've heard from many community residents concerned about different items within that square footage which you have outlined. And so I would, and I know others would appreciate understanding, is there flexibility in that size if we start taking into consideration all the different things these interest groups or individuals want to preserve? You know, are there minimum elements that you think you would need for a patio but still would be able to do it without that size that's being proposed?
I don't know if I have the answer. Do you have the answer?
So, uh, thank you, thank you. So certainly, we are at a point of design and development. So there aren't any hard and fast rules. We are looking at what would work best. We know that there is capacity issues. We want to make it large enough to have these exciting programs that literally draw hundreds of people. We want to make sure that we are actually incorporating and showcasing the orchard. So rather than putting walls between things, how are we really looking at a design that will utilize and highlight that? So I wouldn't say we, it must be seven thousand feet, but we're looking at what the opportunity of the space is in front of us, how we're going to meet those community goals to serve, you know, and really highlight our partners. So I wouldn't say there's any hard and fast, but we'll certainly look at what the best solution would be. And certainly, Rose and I are not landscape architects. We are going to work with the very best that we can find and make sure that we have all the professional and, and good information to make it most successful for your community.
Thank you. And then on the donation, in addition to what Lolly, I think, has committed to this project, does Lolly, Santa Clara County, envision continuing to fund this project in the event it exceeds the two million dollar amount currently proposed? And, and the reason I'm asking, one, you have no idea where this project will go and how much it will cost. But also, you know, if there's a situation where we need to relocate items or replant trees, is this something that Lolly would cover, the cost that may be incurred? Is this something Lolly would cover?
So I can't speak to Lolly, of course. However, we will do our due diligence to make sure that we are staying within budget, that we are prioritizing the things that we need to do to make it successful and stay within the budget, and respect all of the hard work that's gone into, from all of these support organizations. The library district then will be responsible for maintaining that, for furnishing it. So we certainly, as well as, we'll have a project coordinator, so we're certainly investing in the project as well. But it is a hundred percent funded by your community.
Thank you. And then I have two more questions, man. I think these questions are for the city manager. So Mr. England, can you explain again what we're actually approving tonight? And then the second question is, what does the process look like going forward?
So tonight, I don't think I'd use the term approval. It's, we're, council's giving us the authority to move forward on a concept, to look at a patio at the library that meets the needs that were outlined today with the budget that was, was presented. So depending on where we go from here, that, that application package will determine the approval. So it could, there is a path where it could go, require approvals from the historical commission, the planning commission, and city council again. It could be a combination of those bodies. It could be only one of those bodies. It really depends on the application package that, that we get. And then the design that, that's submitted will determine the route that we take. So tonight, council isn't approving the, the concept. They're putting it in the process to seek entitlements, to start working with stakeholders, to come up with a plan that best meets the needs of the library and all of the various stakeholders on the civic center.
Thank you, Mr. England. And a follow-up to that then is, let's say, you know, majority or more council members hypothetically would want to give direction to preserve the fountain. Or majority or more council members want to give direction to preserve the orchard, trees that are now projected to be replaced or removed. Is this the meeting where we would do that, Mr. England?
I think if the city council, based on the present... I think if the city council, based on the presentation that they've seen tonight, wants to give that direction, now would be the time. I think that, based on the discussion and the public comment, I think the, giving the library an opportunity to work with stakeholders and come back is also a route the council could take. But ultimately, this is city property. The city council can put whatever restrictions on it it desires.
Thank you.
Okay. So that last bit gave me one question to ask, which is, what does the library would do additional work with stakeholders and then come back accomplish? I mean, we look at something slightly different, but you still haven't really started the process, correct?
That's correct. I would imagine if, Mayor, if this is an item that's going to come back to council, it will come back when it's, after it's been to a commission. I mean, I actually left out the library commission as an example when I was naming all the commissions. This has, this has a process that it has to go through. But if it was coming, if it's going to come back to council, I think it, it needs to come back in a more concrete manner. So we're not reacting to situations that may be hypothetical or may not come to pass.
So not letters, but actual commission presentations are more normal process. Okay, thank you. That helps. So I didn't have any, so Vice Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. And listening to Councilman Flagler's questions, I wanted to follow up on one she asked. And specifically, there's a $2 million budget that's been set aside. It sounds like the money is appropriated or ready to move forward with the project once it's been approved at all levels and it has to be approved. Once the project starts, and once construction starts, if it turns out that the project is going to overrun $2 million, is there a commitment from the county or one of the stakeholders to fill in whatever extra it's going to cost to complete the project?
So you all are very well aware of public process. So we will make sure that as we're going through the, the many permitting and making sure that all the Ts are crossed, that we are on budget. However, to your point, that will also give us opportunity if we find at some point that we do need additional funding. The library district will take responsibility to find that funding in terms of, again, I won't know exactly where that is, Vice Mayor. But as we go through and make sure that the bids are coming in with a realistic figure that we're all comfortable with, we'll make sure that we find the funding to make this a reality for you.
Great. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And Councilmember Daly, you still have no questions? Correct. Okay. So I think that addresses council questions. We're going to open it up to public comment. If you're online and want to speak on this item, which is agenda item 17, please raise your hand. I see some hands coming. And I have a number of cards here. So we're going to start with speakers in the chamber. We're going to do two minutes. And I'm going to queue you up. So we're going to start with Teresa Morris, followed by Elizabeth Ward, and then Lindy Hill. So Teresa, you're you're asking me if you can follow who? She doesn't, she hasn't given me a speaker card. All right. So this is two minutes.
Okay. Commons are not merely physical sites for resource extraction and economic activity, but also, oh, I am on the Park and Rec Commission. I am not speaking as a Park and Rec Commissioner. I want to make that very clear. I am speaking as a resident only. Appreciate the time. Commons are not merely physical sites for resource extraction and economic activity, but also important sites for expressing village identity, social well-being, and belonging. This is per the International Journal of Commons. I've made this point many times in this chamber, not necessarily with the current council. Commons are important. We need them. They belong to the public. Our historic orchard is a common area. It belongs to the public. It might sound like pie in the sky thinking for some, but it is crucial thinking for all. Without places such as our historical orchard, we lose identity, fresh air, a future asset for health, for our children, and a common space to share. I'd like to point out that I often hear the council tell residents that they do not fully understand the details and nuances of specific agenda topics. I think we have a case of that here. The staff report did not include any details regarding the responsibility, history, and size, and total tree requirements of maintaining the historic orchard. Therefore, when letters of support came in from the public, they lacked the details so crucial to understand why some people could even think of opposing such a marvelous idea as a proposed enclosed library patio. And I am all in favor of a patio if we have the space for it. But that sets up an us against them atmosphere in our town, and it disappoints me. So I have a few other points. I was in Willow Glen recently, and I was sitting in their enclosed patio, lovely space. It's within the patio, within the library. It's wonderful that such a generous donation has been offered to the library. Moving forward, I suggest looking at options that do not touch the orchard space. It's a historic orchard that has restrictions with regard to size and total trees planted, very specific size, very specific amount of trees. If we give the library even three trees at this point.
Thank you, Ms. Morris, your time.
Okay. Thanks.
I appreciate it. All right. Elizabeth Ward will be followed by Lindy Hill and then Pierre Bedard.
Good evening, council. I'm Elizabeth Ward, the executive director of the Los Altos History Museum. And I have been delighted to have an opportunity to have conversations with both Rose and Jennifer. We appreciate that the museum was consulted. We were approached and asked for our opinion on this. And I wanted to clarify that in no way does the museum feel like it is our responsibility, especially until there's an execution of an agreement with the city council, to make any recommendations or to make any statements about what should or should not happen with the historic resource inventory that is the orchard. The orchard is the purview of the city right now. We don't have any sort of agreement with you for otherwise. And this hasn't gone through the historical commission. So I just wanted to say that although I have presented a letter of support for the idea that any sort of outdoor space that is looking out onto the orchard, adjacent to the library, any space of that sort, we are delighted that the library has offered us a sort of quid pro quo use of outdoor spaces. The library has held programs at the museum in our outdoor spaces. We're excited at the opportunity to do something with the library. But that does not, I, my letter of support for that concept is not place-based. It's not that specific area there. It's just the general idea. We definitely appreciate that the library is willing to make a, an outdoor space available to the community. My understanding of the specific location here is its adjacency to the orchard room and the ability to open up the doors to the orchard room, and therefore the ability to sort of rent out the orchard room and its outdoor space adjacent to it as a, for special events of various sorts. So I think that there's other reasons why that particular space is being looked at and that there are opportunities all around the orchard. But nevertheless, we've been super excited, very grateful to have the library approach us, and we're happy to collaborate. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Ward. Lindy Hill is next. Oh, Cindy, I should have.
I, excuse me, I have to learn to make my Cs not look like Ls.
I'm so sorry. Cindy Hill. I only know her, see her every month.
But I like, I like my new name. Thank you.
Lindy's a cool name, too. Yeah. Pierre Bedard, and then Anita Wu and daughters. Well, you're a couple down in the queue. Okay.
All right. Thank you.
Ms. Hill.
Good evening, Mayor Meadows and council members. I'm Cindy Hill, president of the Los Altos Library Endowment, Lolly for short. And excuse me, I'm having allergy problems right now. I urge the city council to approve the library patio project and send the proposal to the Development Services Director for review and necessary approvals. This proposal addresses the overcrowded situation at the library and how to meet the needs of our two communities, Los Altos and Los Altos Hills. In a number of studies over the years, 2008 and 2018 are the most recent ones, the library district determined that lack of space is our library's most pressing need, especially for families and children's programs, which are often oversubscribed. I remember when I got to attend one of the sessions and everybody was sitting on the floor, and I was so thankful that the fire chief did not come by because there were more than 100 little heads in there. This was years ago. Lolly committed to fully fund this design and construction of the outdoor patio, patio space connected to the orchard room and the children's room. This commitment does include a generous half a million directed donation to Lolly from the Chow family of Los Altos Hills. The Chow family actually lived in Los Altos. Their children were raised here. They used the library. They moved to Los Altos Hills. They still use the library. They think very fondly of it. Based on the library's commission's recent research, our two towns' populations have increased by over 2,600 people from 2010 to 2020, many of which are children and many of which use the library. We look forward to working with our community librarian, the county librarian, and the groups that are invested in this project, including the history museum, the Orchard Commons Committee, and the library commission, plus other groups and residents of both towns. Thank you for the time.
Thank you, Ms. Hill. Cindy Lindy. Mr. Bedard.
Merci. Thank you very much. I'm speaking as, I will say one thing as a library commissioner, and that is, we did vote on this and unanimously approve that this move forward to the city council and be considered. But I'll speak as a resident because I want to object. I want to object because we don't go far enough. We need this. We need this as a community. I have been working with the library for five, six years to try to make stuff like this happen. We need it. Rose knows what she's doing. Jennifer knows what they're doing. The, Lolly knows. They've rounded things up. We need to move forward with the concept, but we need to go beyond that. This is a city of apricots and intellectual property. We need to incorporate the apricot orchard into the library. It's got to be into that orchard, and we need to educate our people. Apricot trees, how we raise them, what we do can all be incorporated into curricula. Our library sees 10,000 people a month go through its doors. The city needs those people to go to the community center. All it takes is, I always say, all it takes is one person going to the book sale to decide to have a wedding in the community center. You're done. So it's great. The stuff between the community center, the orchard room, the library, I've always encouraged, this is exactly what we need to do. This is what the community needs coming out of where we're coming from. And again, we need to go further and look at how we can improve the services back up to where we were before the pandemic. We can do it as a community, and I look forward to doing it as a citizen of Los Altos. Thank you.
Thank you. So Anita Wu and your daughters, so why don't you all come up and you can each have two minutes? I don't, do you have a one-by-one-by-one presentation? You all have your presentations. Okay. So who's going first then? Each, each of you will have up to two minutes.
All right. I go, okay.
Good evening, Mayor Meadows and distinguished Los Altos City Council. I'm Anita Wu, and it's so good to meet you, as well as see some familiar faces from my tenure on the Los Altos Public Arts Commission. Cindy Sheldon, bestselling American novelist and television creator of the shows such as I Dreamed of Genie, once said, "Libraries store the energy that fuels imagination. They open up windows to the world and inspire us to explore and achieve and contribute to improving quality of life. Libraries change lives for the better." The Los Altos Library is one of my favorite places. I fond memories there as it is one of the first places I took both my girls when they were infants and toddlers. We are regular patrons of the library, not only for the books, but also for the wonderful programs they offer, from their storytimes to painting pine cones at Thanksgiving and magic shows. These excellent events are so popular, there's often only space for up to 100 guests, whereas libraries in other neighboring towns offer programs and events and spaces that house much more. The Los Altos Library Patio Project will help create a flexible space, both indoors and outdoors, to expand the outreach of the educational and community building activities offered by our library. It will increase the library's outreach to all ages and demographics. It will create opportunities for new, varied, and even more elaborate event programs to be held in our community. From David Lanky's "Great Libraries Build Services," even more excellent libraries build communities. Imagine a lifelong community of families, children, and adults engaging with each other and building connections on our new expanded outdoor library patio. As such, I urge you to approve the Los Altos Library Patio Project. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Wu. So I have Abrielle as daughter number one and Arabella as daughter number two. Which order are we going? If daughter number two by birth order is the youngest, then this must be Arabella.
This is Abrielle.
Oh, this is Abrielle. Okay. All right.
And I love how they're prepared, Mayor.
I, I know. I'm super impressed. So Abrielle, just take your time. When you're ready, you can start. Okay. So this is Arabella. Okay.
Hello. My name is Arabella Ching. I am nine years old. I love libraries. I love storytime at the library. I started going to library storytime when I was one years old. I went every week until I started kindergarten. In fact, I was inspired by a memory I had from a storytime on Lunar New Year at the Los Altos Library. This year, I presented a Lunar New Year lesson to my third grade class. I read the book What the Rat Told Me out loud to my class. This was the story that I had heard at storytime years ago. It was one of my favorite storytime books. When I read it, heard the book to my class, my class loved it. Speaking of Lunar New Year, when I went to the Los Altos Library to see the Lunar New Year Lion Dance, I could barely get a spot to see the lion dance. Also, some people didn't even get to see the lion dance because the library's children's section was full of people. So I would like to expand the story room to include the patio so more children and adults can have a chance to enjoy storytime and other events at the library. Thank you.
Thank you.
We'll, we'll not look.
Oh, yeah.
Hi, I am Abrielle Ching. Can you do the next sentence? I love the arts and crafts at the library, and I love storytime at the library. Want to do the last one? Okay. But a bigger space will be wonderful for kids and adults. That was her, that was her piece.
Oh, okay. Thank you. Thank you, ladies. We appreciate you coming to speak this evening. All right. So that seems to be all the public comment here in the chamber. So Savi Clark will go online.
Dr. Arisalei Castillo Sanchez.
Hi. Good evening, council members and mayor and staff. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Wonderful. Thank you very much for your time and for being present here today. I'm here. I'm a Los Altos resident, and my family and I, we visit the Los Altos Library on a regular basis. We visit one, two, three times a week, and we're avid readers, and we participate for their, sorry, I'm a little bit nervous because this meeting's quite going longer than expected. But we participate in, in the storytimes and various activities and lectures that are hosted at the library. Every time we have the opportunity to attend these wonderful events, they're at full capacity. And me being a parent and a community member, I feel, I feel bad that so many parents and grandparents and nannies and babysitters and family and nannies and babysitters and family members are turned away, because there's not enough space in the orchard room. It's not a very big room. The librarians and staff do a fabulous job of trying to accommodate everyone with the ticket system, but the capacity is 100 people. And with the little ones, you know, sometimes you need more than one adult. Depending, you know, I have a son with special needs, and at times I need my husband to help me with him. And so, you know, it's been very, very difficult. I know I only have a few more seconds, but I'm here to express my concern about the limited capacity at Los Altos Library, and I would love for you all to support having more room for the community. And thank you very much, and have a good night.
Thank you, Dr. Castillo Sanchez.
Julie Crane.
Hi, good evening. This is Julie Crane, I am the chair of the Los Altos Library Commission. And while it is in your packet, and it was spoken to by Commissioner Bedard, I just wanted to reflect the fact that at its June 2 meeting, the library commission did vote unanimously to support the concept of the main library patio project as presented to it in its meeting materials. So, thank you so much.
Thank you, Ms. Crane.
Tom Ferry.
Hi, thank you for the time, can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Hi, my name is Tom Ferry, I'm a resident of Los Altos, and I love to use the library and have been using the library for over 50 years. And I'm so excited about the donation that the Chow family has made, this is fantastic. Just two concerns. One is, I was a little bit concerned about the comments, the answers to the questions about the potential cost overruns, and where the funding will come when the inevitable cost overruns happen. So I asked council to require that that issue be addressed in a formal proposal in a more specific way. My second point is, having been a lifelong resident of Los Altos, I have a lot of concern about taking trees out of the orchard. So I'd urge the council and staff to also require that this project not remove any tree from the historic orchard. And I think if the architects and landscapers can get creative, that would not be a tremendously difficult constraint to meet. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Ferry.
Resident two? And I see no other hands raised.
Okay, thank you, city clerk. So, we're going to bring this back to council to discuss. First of all, I just want to
It's going up and down.
I don't see
Yeah, it's currently down.
I don't see a hand, so, yeah, so we're going to move on.
It's back up. Do you want me to call on that?
If you want to call on it, I don't, yes, call on her, yes, go ahead.
Roberta, we see your hand going up and down, so I'm gonna allow you to talk to see if you had a comment.
Yes, I do, and I had my hand raised. So, good evening, everybody. So I am here to speak, obviously, the donation is very generous, and obviously, you know, the library wants to expand their space, and this, I don't find anything wrong with that, but my major concerns are, I need to speak on behalf of the orchard. You know, I sent all of council and staff the timeline of the approvals of the heritage orchard, and how we had to get county and state approval, which ultimately, you know, falls under the Secretary of Interior for the State of California. We are a certified local government, and there are absolute boundaries and number of trees and land area mass that is included in the orchard. And I'm here to try to protect the orchard. It is a working orchard, it is valued by many, many, many people in the community. I recall, you know, going to the orchard with the 85 peoples, trying to get a historic sign installed in the orchard. And I hope that we go through, all of this had to go be approved on the SEQA, and I hope that we go through the proper procedures in order to make sure that we protect our orchard. Because the library has their agenda, but we need people to stand up for this beautiful, working piece of land as part of Los Altos, it is our centerpiece. And I do appreciate the fact that in other agenda items, you're going to be putting money in to replace some trees, to get some irrigation, and I hope you do not allow the library to encroach on the property that is now the orchard. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Phillips. So now we're going to close public comment again, and bring it back to council. So, let me start off by saying what has been echoed by others who have spoken tonight, including my colleagues, that big thanks to the Chow family, this is a very generous donation, and it illustrates the importance of libraries in our community. So, thank you to the Chows, and thank you to Lali for stepping up and offering the balance. So, this is a generous offer, and much needed from the community. Okay, sorry, I got a little distracted here. So, this is a little unusual, as I think the city manager mentioned when he kicked us off. We don't have an application in front of us. So, we have a concept. I'm gonna call it a concept rather than the concept, because there's a number of variables, I think, that we'll probably touch on tonight. So, I would suggest to my colleagues that we don't necessarily get, need to get down into details as though we're looking at a plan here that has been through a process, we're not at that point. So we're at the beginning of the process, which is unusual for us. So let's focus on what's important, and I think the direction we can give, so we can get it to staff so that it will go through the proper process. I think we're also hearing that from the public. And so this is a great starting point. And with that, I'm going to open it up to my colleagues for discussion, and so that was just my opening preamble. That's not my comments yet. So who would like to go first? Councilmember Daly? Go ahead.
Very exciting concept. No doubt that the community has needs that more space in the library will meet. To see the photograph of kids peering through the window into the orchard room really sort of perfectly encapsulates that. But there are a number of sort of potentially colliding equities here, and we need to make sure that we account for all of them. I am really optimistic that we can do that. I've taken the opportunity to walk around the site with a number of different people who bring different knowledge and interests to the subject. And I am eager to refer this to our development services director, and let the parties continue to work together to come up with a plan that we can actually approve at some future date. So, all I want to do is say thank you to the Chow family for their directed donation. Thank you to all of the other donors who have contributed to the Los Altos Library Endowment, and to the board of the Los Altos Library Endowment. And thank you to, you know, the Orchard Commons Committee, and the History Museum, and all of the other stakeholders who have expressed enthusiasm and concerns. And I'm eager to see us move forward and navigate those concerns, and I'm excited. So, that's what I have to say. Thank you, Mayor.
Do you want to make comments on any of the specifics that I suspect we're going to touch on, or do you wait?
You know, as a principle, I am committed to the preservation of our historical orchard. I'm also committed to the principle of protecting and venerating past gifts to the community by community leaders, by donors who have put their time and money into contributing fountain that exists at the corner of San Antonio there. And then, of course, we've got a number of sort of, you know, planning and zoning and building issues that we'll have to contend with, but I'm also confident in the professionalism and capability of our staff to navigate those. So I really don't want to get into the details, other than to say that the principle of preservation and appreciation for past gifts are my guiding principles.
Thank you, very good. All right, who would like to speak next, vice mayor?
Thank you, Mayor, I will also be brief. I found the most persuasive comment tonight from Commissioner Bedard. The library simply needs additional space, there's absolutely no doubt about that. And the opportunity to expand the library with this outside patio really is an amazing windfall for the city. And I do not want to see that fall aside. In some of the letters and in some of the comments I've heard tonight, it really does sound like it's a zero-sum game. I know another public speaker said it's as if it's us versus them. And it really doesn't have to be, and I don't see it that way. I don't think that the library wants to do harm to our historic heritage in the city. I also believe that those who were so involved and critical to making the library, the centerpiece of the city, an historic monument, historic land, did so with the intent of constraining the community from utilizing the common space that we all have to share, to the detriment of our city's children, but our community as a whole, which, as we know, needs more library space. So, conceptually, I like the idea of moving forward with the patio. Obviously, there's a lot that still has to be done. We're at, what, 10%, maybe less than 10% of the work that has to go into this. Like my colleague, Mr. Daly, I have all the faith in the world and staff that they will be able to work with the stakeholders and find some kind of a way forward. That maybe it doesn't give the library everything it wants, that maybe it doesn't give those who are guardians of the orchard everything they want, but hopefully can find some way that really enhances both the orchard and the library. I think that's absolutely possible. So, I don't want to expand, I don't want to build a patio at the expense of the orchard. I don't want to protect the orchard at the expense of the library. And with respect to the fountain, which I didn't even know really its historic background until I got some emails last week. And again, I have all the faith in the world that staff has seen those emails. To the extent that there is part of our heritage with that fountain, I hope that we can find some way of preserving it. Maybe the fountain can be incorporated into the patio, maybe the fountain can be moved, as it actually operated as a fountain for quite a long time. But I think that there are other markers at that location which merit preservation, and perhaps the fountain can be built or moved elsewhere. So, thank you.
Thank you, vice mayor. Councilmember Flagler.
Thank you, Mayor. And I will just again say thanks to all the groups that worked on bringing this forward to council. Much appreciated, and of course, to the Chow family, if they're listening, or if any family members are here, really appreciate the donation. Understatement to say generous, I mean, obviously, they could have made this donation to different organizations or not make a donation at all, and the fact that they've made this donation to the Los Altos Library, it's really an honor, and we're humbled and appreciative for this donation. I agree with a lot of what the vice mayor just said about how we move forward. Because I also support the concept. As a young mom who used to be one of those late parents getting to the library, so had to peer in from the window outside or squeeze next to a friend, I very much appreciate the need for more space at the library, and if this is one way for us to get it, I 100% support it. I do have concerns about how this impacts the orchard, how this impacts the fountain, and anything else that we may not be aware of today, right? Because a lot of us, I think, learned more about that fountain that we've all seen and walked by for many years, and only to find out that there's a deep history related to that fountain. And so, where I, you know, based on what the city manager said, and the direction I think he's hoping for from council tonight, I would support direction that makes clear that we want to protect the fountain, and any tiles next to the fountain. And to the vice mayor's point, if it's possible to preserve it by moving it somewhere else, I think that's something I could support as well. But I definitely support finding a way to preserve the fountain because of the history and what it represents. And also with the orchards, I mean, I don't know enough about orchards and apricot trees to know if we can replace them, you know, move them to somewhere else in the orchard. But I would also support, as we move forward, and this drawing evolves for the outdoor patio, that we do keep as a priority maintaining the trees as many as we can, if we don't have to remove or replace any of those trees. I would be also very supportive of that. Based on the answers we have received tonight, it's really hard for us to make the call on whether or not we can get a usable patio without moving some of those trees. And so, to the vice mayor's point, you know, I don't want to sacrifice, I don't want us to end up with a patio that really doesn't serve the purpose for which we're seeking, right? We don't just want an outdoor space that's not usable and won't address the obvious needs of the library. So we need a sizable space, and we need to balance that with how do we protect and preserve these other assets of the community. And the last thing I think was brought up, Mayor, and I don't know where my colleagues are on it, but I definitely support the suggestion by one of the public speakers about making clear, and Mr. England may be able to tell us the best place to do this, but the cost overrun. I appreciated what one of the public speakers said, we need it to be very clear that to the extent this project exceeds the $2 million that's being put before us today, that the city does not incur those additional costs. Because I want all stakeholders and parties involved to recognize that even though as a city we may support it, and we think it's a great project, that we also have limited resources, and so if we can really work within the budget, and if we do have a cost overrun, it would not fall on the city. I think wherever we need to put that, Mr. England, if that's some direction you need tonight, let us know. But for me, that's also very important for all the stakeholders and parties to understand. Thank you.
Thank you, councilmember Flagler. Councilmember Liang.
Thank you, Mayor. What I keep hearing from the public, as well as my fellow councilmembers, is that we all value and protect the open space, the historic orchard, and the fountain plaza. And what I would be concerned about is that we are unclear, and we don't want to send you off to go spend a lot of money on a proposal. I think what we had before us from the resolutions is that a clear map of where our historic orchards are. And to me, it's important for us to protect our historic orchards. And I'm concerned that if we encroach onto the historic orchard, it might present a constraint that should be known before a lot of time and money is invested. So I think that's important, because I just, we, you know, it is unclear, your proposal is unclear and unspecified. And it's unfair for us to say, go ahead and move forward. Because this would create expectations that any design that is developed would be approved by council, and that's not true. by council, and that's not true. And anything that involves change in use of the city land will be needing to come back to council as well. So, with an unclear proposal, I am uncomfortable. I feel there needs to be more specificity and a more defined plan, because if you're hearing from council, "We want to protect our orchards, we want to protect the fountain." So, if we don't do our due diligence and understand where this patio that you have envisioned will go, then we need to better, need to work with you. Because I respect, and I am thankful that Mr. Chow was very generous in his donations, and I hear what you're saying about needing space to accommodate the programs. When I go into the library myself, I'm concerned and wonder, "How can we better accommodate the public there?" Many of the programs are children's programs, as was stated. The wall between the children's area and the orchard room can be an open accordion wall or open glass doors that slide over to one side, and you have a bigger, larger area to accommodate the children's programs. Also, modernization of the building could incorporate opening the library up to the patio as well as to the orchard, but may not encroach on any of those spaces. If we're okay with relocating the fountain, I could support that, as councilmembers said. But you have people who have made some contributions, and they might have a different opinion. And so, my concern would be that the proposal is unfair, and I would encourage you, before spending a lot of money, that perhaps we need a study session, because I feel that we don't want you to be headed in the wrong directions. There's opportunities for collaboration. As the museum people said, you have a patio out there behind that you've utilized, you could either continue to partner, modernize that as well, beautify that, and that would not impose on either the plaza or the orchard. And so, the city of Los Altos, as stated by myself, as well as other people, is a certified local government for the historically designated apricot orchard. And I, it's important for us to follow the rules that we need to follow, and we just can't approve alternative land use without going through the proper procedures. And until we do that, I'm not comfortable by just saying, "I approve the concept that was presented tonight." Because if that would mean, you know, "I'm not hearing," and I'm thinking, "Because I'm not hearing, we're unclear in giving direction to you as well." Earlier, you asked a question, my fellow councilmember Flagler asked a question, and then the city manager said, "This would be the best opportunity to make it clear at this meeting what we would like to protect." So, we're saying we would like to protect the orchard. We hear other people saying we'd like to protect the fountain plaza. But yet, if the plans come back and we can relocate the plaza, maybe. So, I don't want these maybes to send you in the wrong directions, come back, and then, you know, thinking that it's going to go forward. And that's my concern, is the wrong messaging we're sending forward, as well as the money that's going to be put going forward as well. I think there's opportunities to have more discussions with the history museum and to see where this can go. So, that's my comments tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Liang. Okay, so, I hear Councilmember Liang saying something potentially a little bit more different, or at least at the sort of furthermost ends of the spectrum of what the rest of us are saying. So, let me just weigh in with what I would say, and then, because I actually think that four of us are probably aligned here. So, I support the concept of a library patio, I appreciate the generous gift. I agree regarding, and let me, I'll give some more detail around the orchard and the fountain. So, one thing about the fountain, and I too didn't know, I mean, you can live in the city a long time and only discover things. The Walter Singer bust is coming back sometime soon. Yes, so, well, it's up in the chamber? Oh, I didn't, well, there you go, see? Nobody told me. Anyway, so, I knew it was coming back, it's back. Anyway, I digress, and that's not on the agenda. So, it's important, and particularly this applies, well, different aspects apply. The orchard, obviously, is historically designated, the fountain was a gift, and I think actually, or aspects of the fountain. And the Chows would actually appreciate, they probably didn't know, I don't know if the library knew, you know, the background behind the fountain. And so, they wouldn't want to think that their gift could just disappear at some point when nobody remembered where it came from either. So, I think a new gift and an old gift are both important and can be appreciated. So, that said, I think that, and obviously, the orchard is an important part of our town and is one of three historic orchards in Santa Clara County at least, or maybe even the Bay Area. I don't have the details. I think we can save it and/or do substantial mitigation that reflects the intention hearing. I think we are open to creative solutions, whether trees move, whether they're incorporated, whatever, we're not going to, believe it or not, we're not going to design from the dais. And so, I think that it makes sense to send this proposed project to Development Services for review and exploration of preserving and mitigating the fountain and the orchard. In the process of doing that, you'll get more information about the cost. Right now, we can't, we don't know if a million's, you know, maybe going to be the cost, not two, we don't know if it's going to be five, I mean, God forbid it's five, but. So, that, I think, is where most of the council stands. So, can I have a motion, and we can test that theory?
Mayor, I would just want to comment for your clarification from the public's, you know, you're not committing to any project tonight, and especially for purposes of SEQA. We're going to go through the whole land use and entitlement process, including SEQA. So, this isn't preapproving anything, and I do, I would like a motion for you to be clear on that you are recommending that the council sends this item to the Development Services Director for review and to explore all the necessary approvals, but it would be good to have a motion on that.
Okay. Thank you, City Attorney. Councilmember Daley, or you go ahead and make a motion?
I move that the City Council of the City of Los Altos refer the library patio concept to the Development Services Department for the ongoing process of developing the concept with the stakeholders, and express the desire of council to
Preserve and protect.
Preserve and protect our historic orchard and past gifts to the city.
Second.
I would suggest a friendly amendment, preserve and protect. I would like to include the concept of mitigation, because if, yes.
I'd like to interject for the council. So, the code prescribed in chapter 147840, recommendation for pre-application study session of design review. I'd like to push the council in the direction of moving forward. Everything, we're kind of talking mitigation, recognizing prior gifts, and understanding and protecting the historic orchard, those are all things that can be further discussed if, for some reason, after the preliminary application is reviewed by the Planning Commission with referral to the city council, it identifies some of the mitigation, protection, and observing some of the items that we all just listed, it's going to give you more of a cohesive ability to kind of really provide the direction for the formal application for design review for Development Services to undertake. So, I think that's probably more so what everyone's holistically describing from the dais right now, and that will cover the ability for us to do the exploration of everything that might be needed.
Are you suggesting that's a motion? I mean, I wasn't quite, are you offering a substitution?
Yes, I'm friendly offering a more refined, open-ended option that will give us exactly what you're all looking for, and obviously, just based on discussion this evening, since this is a referral to myself as the Development Services Director, it's something that would be considered as a part of the preliminary review that would go to a study session, which is inevitably something else that was discussed tonight.
Yeah. Okay, so, before I go to you, Councilmember Liang, we have a motion and a second on the table, and we've had a friendly amendment, and we've had a further elaboration. So, what would you care?
I would like to amend my motion. I would like to strike everything after the part about referring it to Development Services. So, the motion would be, I move that the City Council of the City of Los Altos refer the contemplated library patio concept to the Development Services Department for further development.
Director Zorn, do you need reference?
You can for the specificity, it's 147840.
From the amendment, refer to the said code section.
That's fine.
Can I add a friendly amendment to?
Yeah, I'm coming. I'm now going to go to Councilmember Liang, because you've had your hand up, Councilmember.
Okay, because I was more comfortable when we identified the protections, and I think somehow we have to have that in the motion, because I would be comfortable, moving forward, identifying that, because I think it's important to have these things in the motion. If we don't have them in the motion, I'm uncomfortable. And I think we can all support it if we did that, because it captures how we offer them. So, I would like to continue to include that, to recognize the protections of the orchard and the mitigation, and including that.
Okay, let me check with Councilmember Flagler. We have, again, a motion and a second, well, a friendly amendment with a second, I'm actually kind of lost where we are. Councilmember Flagler, what were you going to?
No, it's a point of clarification, Mayor, because I'm also confused. So, I want to go back to Mr. England for clearer direction on what we should be doing as council, because I was under the impression as well that you wanted us to say today, so we don't get too far down the road, in a direction that we wouldn't support when it came back to us.
Councilmember Flagler, I think the first motion that included the language around preserving the orchard and the fountain, and potentially, language around mitigation, I think that gave us all the direction we needed. The description that Director Zorn's gave is something that may happen later regardless, as it goes through the approval process. So, I would say the initial motion gives staff the direction it needs, and it sounds like, at least from the motion, council the comfort that it desires.
Okay, so, may I ask my colleagues to withdraw their current motion, and based on that input, go back to the first one, and you don't necessarily, well, go ahead, I'll let you do that. Do you withdraw your standing, your motion now?
I withdraw the amended motion, and I accept the friendly amendment to the initial motion proposed by the mayor, which adds the language mitigation to protect the orchard and
Preserve, protect, and include mitigations if necessary.
Right.
Perfect.
Okay, and that was
So, I move as so stated by all the parties.
And at that time, the second was with the Vice Mayor.
Well, friendly amendment to refer to the code section that Director Zorn's recommended including.
Accepted.
Okay, so, I believe we have a first and a second.
May I have a question? So, earlier, we talked about that it's the concept, so we're not going to make sure that we're not stuck on any square footage.
That's what, yes.
Okay, got it. I'm just making sure. Okay, got it. I'm good then.
Okay, so, we have a motion and a second. City Clerk?
Councilmember Daley.
Yes.
Councilmember Flagler.
Yes.
Councilmember Liang.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Weinberg.
Yes.
Mayor Meadows.
Yes.
Please don't make me read back that motion. Motion carries.
I'm sure you'll write it just like
I've already told him, he's just got to send it to me.
Couldn't we add the link of the meeting?
It was actually the original motion before that, I think. Okay, all right, with amendments. Okay, so, we have finished Agenda Item 17. Agenda Item 13 was pulled from consent, and we're going to move to that, because it is closely related to some extent. And so, staff, I don't know who was going to say a few words about item number three, which is the three-year agreement for orchard maintenance with the Orchard Commons Committee.
Mayor, we had the item on consent, so we're happy to answer questions, but we don't have a presentation.
So, we can go to questions. So, I'll go to my colleagues, if you have any questions you want to ask, and then I'll open it up to public comments, so.
I'll yield to you, because I just want, I just have a background check.
All right, thank you, and thanks, Mayor, and thanks, I'm happy, and one of the reasons I asked to place this item after the patio concept project, it's because I know there may be members of the Orchard's Common Committee here, and I wanted to raise some questions that they may be able to answer. So, I am still trying to understand what this committee is. I know it's associated with the History Museum, I don't know if it's a standalone, I don't know if it's a nonprofit, so I really would appreciate better understanding, and I have, you know, four different questions related to it, but the first question is, is this committee a subcommittee of the History Museum, a standalone entity? What is the relationship between this committee and our History Museum? Through the mayor?
Yes, yes, please. Yes, please, I'm curious as well.
So, thank you, Councilmember Flagler, and councilmembers, so I'm Elizabeth Ward, I'm the director of the History Museum. The Los Altos History Museum has bylaws which dictate that we have certain committees. The Orchard Commons Committee is not in our original bylaws, we have not amended our bylaws since, I think, 2008. So, it is on our agenda this upcoming fiscal year to do a bylaw revision, we have a governance committee. So, all of the various committees that we have, including the Education Committee, Exhibits Committee, Collections Committee, Oral History Committee, I have 13 different committees that are part of the Los Altos History Museum. Those committees, not all of them are in our bylaws. We have a process by which all committee chairs do a monthly report to the museum's board. We have a process by which every quarter, the committee chairs are given a budget review process for budget versus actuals, so they, any expenses that come through, all the finances are through the Los Altos History Museum's 501(c)(3). They're all done by our same bookkeeper. We have our professional staff that's on staff at the museum, and all of the expenses come through that with our bookkeeper, and of course, we have audited financials, and we use a CPA firm, so all of that does come through the museum's administrative purview. And we have a process in place by which the committee chairs report to the board, and we report to the committee chairs with financial reports on a quarterly basis, so that they're able to kind of keep track, to make sure everything's staying on track, as well as what the, we also have a structure in place where each staff member is assigned to a couple of different committees, so that there is layers of integration between the staff, the board, and the committee chairs, and then our finances. So, the Orchard Commons Committee, I know, it was definitely, I wanted to sort of say, "Oh, the agenda item said it's with the Orchard Commons Committees," and it is not, it's with the Los Altos History Museum, and that museum is a 501(c)(3). the Los Altos History Museum, and that museum is a 501(c)(3), and we are, but the Orchard Commons Committee is one that was formulated by a proposal to our board, and it was voted on by our board, so it is a standing committee, like many of our other committees at the museum, so, yeah.
Thank you, Dr. Ward, and yes, and to run my questions, because, and not yet, Dr. Ward, I have two more questions, I think you may have to answer, but, so it is, even though it's not yet part of your bylaws, it is considered a standing committee of your board.
Yes.
And so the contract, because they're not a standalone 501(c)(3), it's really the History Museum, this agreement is really with the History Museum.
That's correct, that's absolutely correct.
Okay, and then, this proposed contract for three years, and again, we outlined it's maintaining the orchard, educational programming, you know, work on the master plan, we already have a contract with the History Museum, where we provide funding, because it's our building, it's our History Museum, and I know you're Executive Director, you run the actual programming.
Right.
The funds that we provide to the History Museum, and I'm playing devil's advocate, but why aren't those funds being used for these educational programs?
So the Orchard Commons Committee has been operating for six years, and, or no, probably, maybe it's only four, Jane, since we've had, and we have had programs, like we did a marshmallow roast out in the orchard, we did a, we've done a couple of history walks around the orchard, so there are, there have been very limited programmatic efforts out in the orchard, and it's always, it has, well, and I guess I want to answer your question in a little bit larger sense, so let me, a couple things, points I want to make, is that, of course, as a 501(c)(3), we get designated gifts all the time, so we have a mechanism in place for coordinating off those gifts and putting them in a special category, and those funds will not be spent on anything else. So the Orchard Commons Contract, if this goes through, would be considered a designated gift, and it cannot be used for anything else, it would only be used for that purpose. It is also my understanding that the dollar amount that was agreed upon is particularly actually meant to do the base maintenance of the orchard, the care, the health, the irrigation, the replacement of the trees, it is not, that many of the other value adds that the museum would do, we would be potentially doing a second fundraising for that, we would be using our own funds for those other things. So this agreement is allowing us to bring the orchard up to the health that is necessary for us to do the educational programming, in a way that's not like, oh, ignore that tree that's dead over there, don't trip on this over here, sorry that didn't work there, watch out for the squirrels, right, we're trying to get the whole base maintenance up, so we can do educational programs that are truly enhancing to our community and welcoming to our community. So the other thing I would say is that, of course, with the previous orchard, orchardist in place, it, there was so many layers to go through, and it was always unclear, did we even have permission to do our educational programs? To whom would we be asking for, for permission to walk out into the orchard, or to put in drip irrigation, all these things were sort of, let me call Manny, let's see if we have permission to do this or not, so we're looking for some real clarity, the kind of clarity that we have with the Jacob Reit Smith House, where we really know it is the 501(c)(3)'s responsibility to look out for that asset, and to do programming at the asset, but also knowing that we're in partnership with the city to do the baseline maintenance, to keep sure it's healthy. So we would certainly be putting this in a designated fund, but we do not expect any of this money to be coming into general operating, and to be helping us in any way with our normal programming, and that the programs we've done in the past, using our own funds, have been pretty limited, yeah, pretty modest.
Because I supported the city contributing to exactly what you said, you know, restoring, maintaining, ensuring we have a healthy orchard, and I keep coming back to the fact that it seems broader, how these funds will be used, because you get past the three-year term of this agreement, does the Orchard's Commons Committee or the History Museum expect that the city will continue renewing this agreement, and continue funding the Orchard's Commons Committee outside of maintaining and helping us maintain, because you have the expertise, the Orchard's Common Committee, which I value.
Right.
But is the expectation that the city will continue funding separately, this additional programming work, you know, past the three-year term of the agreement?
Right, and I think there was a discussion of it's a five-year, it's our, it's our professional opinion that it's probably going to take five years for the orchard to get to a status where we would really feel like it's healthy, that we've replaced all of those trees, we've seen that those trees have taken, you might have noticed, two years ago, we planted some trees, and they didn't all take.
Right.
So we do feel like it's a five-year process to go through the rebuilding of this orchard and getting it back to where it needs to be, so this is a three-year agreement, at which time we would meet again, and go through it, and find out where we're at, and to see how far along we've come in that goal, and if it's going really well, and all those trees take, and we would say, okay, maybe we don't need that much just to maintain the orchard, maybe we've finished putting in all the drip irrigation, and maybe the trees have all done great, and the ground squirrels all decided to hitch a hike over to, and, you know, so, and then we would, we wouldn't need as much, but this is, right, I think we all know that the orchard is in a crisis situation right now. You saw that picture that the library put up, right?
And, and Dr. Ward, I have no problem or questions related to maintaining, restoring, having a healthy orchard, I support that contribution, it's the additional programming that it appears the funds are going towards, because we now have a donation or contribution policy, where different groups are coming to us, asking us to approve a certain amount of money for programming and all these other things, and so I want to make sure we're separating those two things, maintaining, restoring, keeping it healthy, I agree.
Yeah, no, that's my understanding of the budget.
It's the additional, that's in our staff report.
Let's save that for, okay, let's save that for discussion, and Vice Mayor, you're tagging on here, so go ahead, yes.
Dr. Ward, I appreciate everything you said, and that was my understanding of how the money was supposed to be used as well, but I see there's a member of the Orchard Commons Committee sitting behind you, who's shaking your head, saying, what you're saying is not right.
So I will allow you to briefly clarify, and then, because we, so come on up, Dr. Packard.
My name is Jane Packard, and I think the point that needs to be clarified is that you don't just restore a living resource of this type within five years, the point is, it will take at least five years to get that back to the quality that is expected by the community, and then, I've costed out exactly how much is required for the, let's see, I think of the yearly cycle, for the irrigation, for the thinning and harvesting of the fruit, for the pruning, for the soil fertility, for the integrated pest management. And one thing that our expert advisor has reminded me, is that you don't need to prune the small trees very much for the first three years, but you are growing them so that they're five years, four, five feet, eight feet, 12 feet, and so you, once we have 444 trees in that orchard, it is going to be a lot of effort, and we are going to have to pay that.
So let me, let me just stop, because that is all maintenance, that's not what the question, that's not what the question is about, we're talking about, so thank you for the clarification.
Yeah, the clarification is that in the budget detail that was given to the city manager to share with you, there's absolutely nothing in there about programming.
Okay, thank you, that's, and we, I understand the concern, and then we clarified that, so, thank you.
Okay.
Appreciate that, okay, so was that the questions that you had, and I know you have a clarification, but I'd like to see if there's any other questions, and take public comment, and then we'll come back, and you can make your clarification, any questions, any questions? Oh, that's right, because this is consent, ah ha, you're right, thank you.
So I have a quick question.
Okay, your question, yes.
So even though we said it's going to authorize the city manager to execute a three-year agreement, I'm hearing more today that it'll probably take five years, and maybe it might be right to just do the five years now, would if, if we choose to do so, can it be a five-year agreement?
So, Councilmember Liang, the agreement is a three-year agreement with a two-year renewal, we set it up that way to have a check-in at the three-year mark, to see if we're on pace with the restoration, we may be behind pace in three years, we may be ahead of pace, but we want to make sure we have a chance to look in, and not do the full five years without that included.
Okay, so I'm going to bring it back to council, so I, if there's, so you have a clarification to make, but let me just suggest that, from the discussion we've heard, there may be other, I think some of the confusion came from the resolution, where it talks about the line about conducting educational community-building activities, so go ahead, Vice Mayor, offer your clarification.
Thank you, Mayor, the reason that I wanted to pull this was because of the language in the "now therefore" clause, at the end of the clause, the document reads, "An agreement with the Los Altos History Museum for maintenance services in the amount of $225,000 for fiscal years '23, '24, '25, and '26." When I read that, I thought it was a bit, I know, we all know what it means, it means $75,000 over each of the next three fiscal years, but I would propose, just to make sure there's no ambiguities here, that the "now therefore" clause read, "With the Los Altos History Museum for maintenance services in the amount of $75,000 in each of fiscal years," and then, how's it reads for it?
It's in the "now therefore." Now therefore.
The last.
Yeah, I support that, I also read it a number of times, and then, based on this discussion we just had, and i-if you look at the title of the resolution, it does talk about maintenance, if you look at the "now therefore," it talks about maintenance, so I wonder if the "whereas" that refers to the Orchard Commons Committee conducting educational and community-building activities as part of their agreement with the city actually should be deleted from the resolution? Not, no, no. So, Councilmember Flagler, does that actually capture the intent of your concern, or what would you think about that?
It does, in the discussion portion of the staff report, it also talks about the money would be used towards educational programming, so for me, it wasn't just the "whereas" recital clause, the staff report also said that, and, and the reason why I'm bringing this up, you know, I really think it's important to separate the two things about maintaining, restoring, keeping our orchards healthy, the three, five, 10 years, that I completely understand, it's almost doubled, so we already contribute and consider contributing to the History Museum for different educational programming across their committees, and so I think if we're providing funding related to educational programming, that should be separate and apart from this.
All the educational programming together, together in one bucket, not a little bit sprinkled here, a little sprinkled there. City Manager, you hear what our concern is, and?
Yes, Mayor, we could certainly make those changes in the contract, I don't think we need to bring it back.
No, no, we're not suggesting you bring it back.
Okay, we're happy to make those changes, yes.
In the resolution, and then in the contract, okay, Councilmember Liang, you have...
Actually, I didn't really have a problem with that, because it's just stating what they plan to do with, as they continue to conduct maintenance, is to utilize this opportunity to do education, because like, when we have the interns or the students that come be part of the program, I think it's good to have that in there, I wouldn't, I wouldn't delete it or eliminate it, because that's what we're going to do as they continue to work to maintain the orchard.
But, okay, so I'm fine with it, based on your comments to leave it in the resolution, but the contract, you'll address then?
Yes, correct.
Okay, so with that...
We are leaving it in?
To the resolution, I think that makes sense, so, Councilmember Flagler.
No, I'm fine, as long as the contract then is explicit, how the funds will be used, it's not, it wasn't just the "whereas" clause, it was also the third paragraph under discussion and analysis in the staff report, and those two things combined raised a yellow flag for me about, you know, how these funds would be used, so I, I'm fine keeping it as a "whereas," but as the mayor said, as long as it's clear how the funds should be used for orch trees, for orchards.
Right, this is a maintenance contract, yeah, okay, Councilmember Daley.
So I'm essentially fine with the resolution as it's, as it's written, although I could go either way on the programming clause, my concern is with the contract, and I want to make sure that we have an "out," although I have every confidence that the History Museum and the Orchard Commons Committee will do an absolutely stellar job, I don't want to wait three years if we see all of our trees dying, because something's gone wrong, so we need to make sure that we can terminate the agreement if the results are inadequate or detrimental to the orchard.
So, Councilmember Daley, per the contract, the city is able to terminate, giving 10 days' notice, and then paying for services rendered to that point.
That sounds great, I'm ready.
Okay, can I have a motion, Vice Mayor, would you be willing to do that? Oh, okay, go ahead, go ahead, Councilmember.
So I'd like to motion that we authorize the city manager to execute a three-year agreement totaling $225,000 for orchard maintenance with the Los Altos History Museum.
Friendly amendment to the now therefore clause, to clarify that $75,000 for the orchard is not possible.
Correct, as amended.
Okay, so we have an accepted amendment to the motion, so City Clerk.
Second.
Yeah, we need a second. No, he just amended it.
You were just amending it, okay, I will second.
Point of clarification, Mayor, motion on the floor, so based on Councilmember Liang's motion, it didn't explicitly say a contract solely for the purpose of restoring, maintaining, and keeping a healthy orchard, if we don't need to include that in the motion, and it's very clear to staff the purpose of these funds, I'm comfortable with the motion, I just want to make sure that we don't approve a motion, and then we see the contract as a public document.
Include it.
Okay, perfect, so amend, so a friendly amendment to say that, Councilmember Liang.
Okay, as stated, going to that.
Yeah, it's just going to be those, it's not going to be for education, okay.
All right, I've, I'll accept, as the seconder, I will accept the friendly amendment as well, all right, so now we have a motion.
Councilmember Daley.
Yes.
Councilmember Flagler.
Yes.
Councilmember Liang.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Weinberg.
Yes.
Mayor Meadows.
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right, thank you very much, so it's after nine, so we're going to take a break, I will let the public know that we're going to, I would expect we're going to finish our agenda this evening, so when we come back, we'll start with Agenda Item Number 18, we'll move on to 19, and then various other more internal matters at the end, so we're taking a 10-minute break.
Okay, I'm gonna try to call us to order. Well, I'm gonna call us to order. Whether you all listen to me is another matter. So, all right, we're going to resume. We're gonna pick up item 18. And which of our staff is going to give us an introduction?
I was hoping that one would work tonight. All right. All right, this item of... All right, so I think we're all settled. So, as we all know, this item blew over from the May 9 meeting. And we're here to talk about the proposed leaf blower ordinance. So, history, obviously. We last spoke about this just as a discussion item with the city council on May 9. So, bringing this back. Per the May 9 meeting, the city council provided four main areas of direction. One was to assign the liability to the property owner. Second was to not issue a violation without at least having one warning, which then ties into actually item number four, which is to provide education ongoing to property owners and landscapers about the ordinance. And then number three was to create a standalone chapter within the municipal code. The proposed ordinance tonight before the council does create a standalone chapter within the municipal code. It does expressively prohibit the already in place prohibition against gas-powered leaf blowers. It establishes the hours of operation for electric leaf blowers to provide additional further clarification that this is what the playground is that you can use for the items that are permissible for use in the city. It does assert the authority and enforcement and the violation structure, again, to not just have by reference, but so it is for absolute clarity provided within the chapter for easy usability. And then, again, does assign the liability of the property owner. So, with that, this item's obviously kind of a quicker one since we recently talked about it last month, is to introduce and waive further reading of the ordinance as proposed. And this is, as I mentioned previously, adding a new chapter to the municipal code under the miscellaneous property regulations. So, with that, staff is present to be able to respond to any questions of the council.
Thank you, Director Zorn. So, as was just mentioned, this is essentially taking what we agreed last month and putting it into ordinance language. So, I think our question should be focused on making sure that the ordinance does translate what we directed last month. So, do my colleagues have questions for Director Zorn? Yes, Vice Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. This afternoon, I think about 4:30 or so, we received a comment from a member of the public who said that the proposed hours in the ordinance in front of us tonight conflicts with another part of our municipal code. And I did not, because I had to commute over here, I did not have a chance to look at it myself. But has staff had a chance to look at that and make sure that there's no conflict?
Yes, so I spent some time looking into that in references. The noise ordinance is very long. And there's some conflicting language even in and of itself that refers to gardening tools. However, there's no definition of what gardening tools is. So, effectively, this new chapter within the ordinance does not conflict with any other provisions contained in the municipal code as it's standalone and explicitly defines what is being regulated in the new chapter.
Do any of my colleagues have any other questions? Just Councilmember Flagler.
Thank you, Mayor. Thanks, Mr. Zorn. Couple of questions on the different sections, starting with 6.1, 6.030. Does that NCO still exist? I'd never heard of this noise control office.
It's kind of like the zonied administrator that was actually already in our code within no references and designation of the authority. So, in theory, yes, I'm also that individual for the municipal code. But yeah, it's never been an expressive designation of a city staff person beyond, obviously, just the reference in the noise ordinance.
So, do we need to amend that section? Currently, it says the NCO is a collaboration between planning and PD.
I don't think that it would be. I think inevitably, there's other code amendments specific to chapter 6.16 that are inevitable that we need to unravel. And that's, I think, a further with also some outside consultation of a third-party consultant. And we can tweak it at that point. But there's nothing in that section currently that would conflict or create some type of conflict between different departments in the agency.
Okay, and just based on your response that you plan to do a more deep dive into that section, I'll hold another question I had related to the NCO. Looking at the proposed 11.5, so .060A... I'm pulling out myself.
What section?
11.15.060 subsection A, Romanate 1. Is the intent there, Mr. Zorn, to do two actual letters? Because it says when a violation has occurred, we'll mail the violation letter to the property address. And then it says, "And if different, the property owner's address is provided on the Santa Clara County tax rule." The reason I'm asking for discussion purposes, if the intent is not to send a copy to the actual address and then a second copy to the address on the county rule for the property owner, then that's something I would need to understand.
So, it would be that if there is... So, for example, we have some family trusts in town. I'm specifically thinking of one that is in a neighboring jurisdiction. And it's very clear that the property that's in Los Altos, they have their mailing address of the physical site in town. And then, we obviously have the mailing address that's on record with the county assessor's tax rolls information that we get monthly. So, we would send both if it's different. But we would have to reconcile that, which we do upon every notice that we send out. So, we reconcile that to see if there is something... The mailing address is different than the physical address here in Los Altos.
And if the addresses are different, we send two letters?
Yes.
Okay, so, thank you. And then, for 11.15.050, that has the actual rates. And that's something I'll bring up in the discussion portion. And then, my last question, Mr. Zorn's, still looking at 11.15.050, where it mentions Title I, so Section A, as prescribed in Title I of the Los Altos Municipal Code. That's a big section. And so, I didn't know if you were referring specifically to the administrative citation section of Title I. Like, I went through and I'm like, which of these sections? It must be the administrative citation section this is referring to.
Um, no, no.
Otherwise, people can look at Title I and decide what they want to apply to.
Yeah, I mean, it would. But of the title, there's chapter 1.10, which is admin and enforcement. Then, there's 1.12, which is the appeals component. So, without having to replicate and duplicate efforts from this portion of multiple different corresponding chapters, it would be prudent after consultation with the city attorney is just to reference the entire title to make sure that if there's any provisions that are triggered, that we would make sure that we do that for the administration enforcement and appeals. And then, obviously, also, then there's chapter 1.20, which is under the violations section, which is most commonly what we actually end up using for the actual citation component. So, it's kind of just making sure that we cover all of our bases. And then, it references them back to the entire title and not just one standalone chapter.
Okay, I'll bring it up in discussion because I think there's a section that could conflict. So, maybe we say as applicable, but I'll bring it up. Thank you.
Okay, Councilmember Liang.
Earlier, I talked about having... If we wanted to help support... Help the public to support clean energy efforts and to reduce pollution. Can you... Do you know of? Or can you suggest what programs we can create to supplementing a buyback or rebate program for gas-powered leaf blowers? Because I think it's important to facilitate and encourage the use of the battery-powered electric blowers now and make full effort doing so. Can you name some?
So, you kind of already covered it is by the buyback program or the rebate program that some other jurisdictions have done throughout California. What I would probably suggest is because CARB is the California Air Resource Board, they haven't come out with certain components that I think we were all hoping for by this time of the year. So, I wouldn't be surprised if they come out with some type of grant funding that we might be eligible to be able to be the pass-through for or if there's another more well-established or re-upped and reinforced program that they already have that some folks can apply to directly to that. They have done that previously in the past, but this...
Go ahead, Councilmember.
I don't think this discussion is on the topic, on the agenda.
Well, we're talking about this...
Well, that's true. What we're looking at is the ordinance. Are you suggesting, I mean, city attorney?
After you make the motion on this, you can give direction or at the end of the meeting, you can have a future agenda item to look at this. But it is getting way off topic.
Okay, so let's hold it for discussion then. Thank you very much for that. Any other questions on topic?
Oh, I do have another question. So, many constituents expressed concern regarding the reliance of complaints by neighbors reporting instances. And you talked about in a previous comments is about how you are aware of neighbors calling in on certain neighbors repeatedly. How can we be sure that our staff is enforcing the ordinance based on their efforts to not just rely on photos or videos? Because I think people are concerned of these video or photo-taking that's going to be allowed in regards to providing these code enforcement tickets, you know?
So, the council provided discussion and direction at the May 9 meeting that would disallow city staff from actually enacting that type of enforcement. That is not something that has been done. It's something that's been previously discussed very regularly leading up to that meeting and since has not really been something that city staff has been asked to do. And I think that's because of what the council unanimously asserted as what would be appropriate enforcement metrics moving forward.
Okay, I wanted it to be clarified and be on record. Thank you so much.
Yeah, I recall that. And I believe that our code enforcement, they're going to have to witness the actual violation occurring in their presence.
I just wanted that confirmation. And it was important for us to have that confirmation on record. So, thank you so much.
Thank you, we've got confirmation. So, the only question I want to ask is one that I know the answer to already because it was in the Q and A. But I think it's important that the community knows. So, can you tell me, please, the difference that we've seen in code enforcement over the last several months, having moved it to development services and with our new code enforcement officer? Has there been a difference?
There has. And it's been a drastic improvement from how it previously had been done. And that is with, again, having a new code enforcement officer that's kind of taking to the position exceedingly beyond expectations. And actually, was just the recent recipient at our annual retreat as the rising star for the city of Los Altos. So, with that being said, is the code enforcement officer has written more citations or notices of violation, providing warning to the residents of Los Altos or to landscape companies in the last three months than had previously been issued in all three years of the previous individual that held that position. So, with that being said, is that there's been a very responsive action being taken to the violations that we receive. Obviously, like I've mentioned before, is leaf blowers are used at the end of a landscaping job. So, sometimes, we're not gonna get there because it's usually the last 10 to 15 minutes. And like me and the chief of police have previously joked around about, we're not gonna have people light up in their cars to drive 60 miles down San Antonio or ECR or Foothill Expressway to catch someone with a leaf blower. But we are doing our due diligence, and it does seem to be working. And it's also something that's noteworthy is even some of the friendly educational kind of notices of potential violations that have been sent out have actually, some of them been received as, wow, we had no idea. We'll address it with our landscaper. And it's working. So, I think it's gonna be a continuous process with ongoing education.
All right, thank you very much. If there's no further questions, I'm gonna open it up for public comment. I've got three speaker cards here in chambers. If you're online and want to speak on leaf blowers item, the ordinance item, agenda item number 18, please raise your hand. I'm not seeing any online, but I do have three here. I'm gonna give three minutes for public comment. We're gonna start with Linda Siff, go to Bruce McFarlane, and then wrap up with Myra Orta. So, Ms. Siff.
I want to thank you, city council members, for working to improve the quality of life in Los Altos by reducing the environmental impacts and health hazards resulting from gas leaf blower use. Thank you for listening to the many Los Altos residents who advocated for more effective gas leaf blower ordinance enforcement. Thank you and the environmental commissioners for doing the research that led to giving gas leaf blower use a number-one priority in the current climate action and adaptation plan. Recognizing the responsibility of gas leaf blowers use belongs to the homeowner is a significant step toward eliminating these blowers in our community. After four and a half years of public education by the Greentown Los Altos Clean Air Advocate Group, I ask that we not get bogged down in more time wasted with public education. Now is the time for proactive code enforcement of this 32-year-old ban. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Siff, Mr. McFarlane, followed by Myra Orta.
Thank you, council members, for the opportunity to speak. I'm Bruce McFarlane. I've lived in Los Altos for 27 years. And like many people who live here, I get up every morning and I go to work in an office. And when I do that, I don't hear gas blowers because I'm not at home. I've missed that for many years. I recently retired. And boy, did I quickly realize what a significant problem we have here in Los Altos with the use of gas blowers. So, I decided to research the issue. And the first thing I learned was that the homeowner was not liable. The second thing I learned was that the officer had to witness the violation. And the third thing I learned was that the time that it takes for an officer to respond to a complaint often was too long, longer than the gardener would use the blower. And so, there would not be a citation issued. And then, also, gardeners started to figure this out. They're not stupid people, and they figured out how to play the game. And so, they would use the electric blower in the front yard and the gas blower in the backyard. Or they would just simply use the gas blower less than 15 minutes, which is about the minimum amount of time that an officer could respond. So, they've learned how to, you know, avoid getting citations. Despite receiving 20 to 30 complaints per month, few citations have been issued. You know, just last week, I saw a worker blowing the parking lot at Los Altos Grill, which is merely blocks from here. You could hear it from here. And I think that the pervasive and cavalier use of gas blowers throughout Los Altos is indicative that gardeners, as well as homeowners, just simply have no fear of being cited for violating the ban on gas blowers. So, according to Mr. Zorn's presentation at the May 8 city council meeting, in 2022, there were only 18 cases opened. I interpreted that to mean citations issued. Enforcement recently was transferred from the police department to the city, and a new code officer and code enforcement officer was hired on April 3 of this year. As of the recent May 9 city council meeting, the city had already issued 42 citations in 2023. That is over a 500% increase in citations issued year over year. And I don't think that that's because there's been a substantial increase in the use of gas blowers. It's because we have a dedicated code enforcement officer out there on the streets, proactively enforcing the ban. I've heard some people suggest that rather than modifying the code, we should instead start with and focus on an education campaign. But there's been many residents actively working on an education campaign over the past few years. So, there's a dedicated group of the Greentown Los Altos people who have distributed to gardeners and homeowners over 1,000 placards, like this one here, the "Don't Blow It" placard, as well as this placard written in both English and Spanish explaining the ban.
Thank you, Mr. McFarlane. Your time is up. You can leave the placards with us if you want. All right, thank you so much. And next speaker, Myra Orta.
Myra Orta...
You might want to pull the microphone a little closer.
Oh, make it a little lower?
Yeah, there we go.
Okay. Alias, Mrs. Leafblower, because I'm the one that started the ban 30 years ago. And we had a group called BAN. Blowers annoy neighbors, and they still do. They still annoy neighbors, and that hasn't changed. I'm actually a little opposed to this attitude of a warning or an education. Now, anyone who knows me knows I love education. Just ask my kids and my grandkids. But this thing about trying to educate Los Altos about leaf blowers, you've got a lot of non-learners. Because we've had leaflets and booklets and articles. And everybody, let's face it, everybody knows there's a ban on leaf blowers. So, I think this attitude of trying to educate is like a waste of time. What really works is money. People care about money. And if you find them to where it hurts, you'll get some action. And I think just this business of a warning, if you don't cut it out, you're gonna get fined, that's like an education thing, and it's not gonna work. What we need is to do what Paulo Alto did and put some teeth into it. Find the gardener once or twice and keep a record. And then, the third time, he loses his license to practice and to work in Los Altos. And frankly, most of them are illegal and don't have a license anyway. I mean, check that out. I know that's a fact. And if you find the homeowners without a warning, they know. This town knows. You find them, start with 100. Second offense, 200. And then, go on and get to $1,000 maybe on the third offense. So, it really hurts. I don't mean 100, 200. I meant 100, 500, and 1,000. That sounds better. Now, as far as this idea of a buyback program, I'm in favor of it. I think it's a good idea. And it's like what I have said in previous meetings about buying back guns. I think buying back the leaf blowers, you know, is also a good idea. And the fact of the matter is, gas leaf blowers cost more to buy and keep going than electric do. So, if you buy back gas and then you give them an electric, now you've got something. And then, you could explain it costs a little bit of money to keep your electric leaf blower going, even repaired.
Thank you.
And it costs lots of money to keep a gas...
Thank you, Ms. Orta.
...blower going and repaired. So, I'm for that buyback program.
All right.
But I think you need to suck a tube in and really find them.
Thank you. I didn't see the ordinance say that, but... Okay, so, do we have... I don't see... I don't have any more cards. I'm not seeing any additional speakers, and I'm not seeing any speakers online. So, we will close public comment and bring it back to council for discussion. Which of my colleagues would like to speak first? Yes, go ahead. Councilmember Flagler.
Thank you, Mayor. And thanks to the speakers who showed up and talked on this item tonight. I have three suggested word changes to the ordinance just to clarify some of the sections I'd asked about in the Q and A. The only substantive change I wanted to raise for discussion with council, it's whether or not we do want to consider increasing the fines. And coincidentally, my proposal tonight was to do, and I still support doing the initial warning without any fines associated with it. But then, after that first warning, you know, would council consider still having $100 for the first amount? And then, for the second violation, it would be 500? And then, the third violation, 1,000? I do think having higher fine amounts, especially when they appear in that warning letter that our residents receive, it can be more effective. The threat of higher dollar amounts being imposed on them if they fail to comply. It's funny, when I was prepping and I thought of proposing increasing the rate, I didn't realize before the Q and A came out today how successful we've been. And so, maybe we don't need to increase the rate at this time. But I know just visually, when someone sees a higher amount, it may get them to act faster.
So, can I ask a question? Because I feel like we discussed this when we discussed it in city attorney. We couldn't go that route without Mr. go that route without misdemeanorizing the higher fines. So city attorney, would you care?
Misdemeanorizing, that's a good one.
Your law student is taking notes.
Misdemeanor. Yeah, because we're under the government code sections where if it's an infraction, we're limited, and if we make it a misdemeanor, we can go higher, but no one wanted to go higher than an infraction. So we are sort of stuck with those penalties.
But to that point, city attorney, there's language I know we could put in the ordinance that allows us not necessarily pursue it as a criminal activity, as a misdemeanor, but allows us to categorize it as a possible misdemeanor. There's language I know in other ordinances where they identify it, it gives the option of it being categorized as a misdemeanor, but it doesn't necessarily mean as a jurisdiction we would pursue it as a misdemeanor.
Yeah, you're looking at the Wabler provisions where it can be, it's at the enforcement officer's discretion as an infraction or a misdemeanor.
And that's where you put that language, just to get the higher.
We could look at, we could look at adding.
And maybe there isn't support for the higher fines, but I know there's a way for us to actually include language that doesn't automatically require to be considered a misdemeanor. A lot of other jurisdictions have that Wabler language that allows it. So that's the only discussion point. The other three things I have, Mayor, are just adding verbiage to the ordinance that I think will make it more clear.
Okay, so I want to, while you mentioned that, I'd like to talk about it because I feel like we spent quite a bit of time talking about that. So Vice Mayor, as I recall, you had some strong feelings about it, so.
A misdemeanor can ruin someone's life. I mean, a property owner has security clearance with the government. Suddenly, they have a misdemeanor. That can have a whole series of consequences. For all the reasons that I articulated the last time we took up this ordinance, I would vote no on it altogether if there was any, if there's any possibility that someone could be given a misdemeanor. I think that the consequences of having a misdemeanor far outweigh the benefits that we're trying to confer to our community.
Thank you for that. That's what I kind of recall where we were at, which is why we were at these what feel to be low levels. I don't disagree with that, but there was a reason why we decided to live with them. Does anyone have any other proposals? We'll get to whether we agree with that or not. Did you, yes, Vice Mayor?
I have two proposals. One of them is just clarifying language. The one that's substantive has to do with proposed section 1115.040B, these are the permitted hours to use leaf blowers. It seems to me that it would behoove us to align those hours with when we actually have code enforcement here. And as I recall, that was, I think it's just modified by a half hour or so. But it doesn't make sense that we would allow leaf blowers at a time when code enforcement is not even here in the city. And I understand that code enforcement hours may change over time, but we know what the hours are right now. It was a question of staff. So I would like that the hours in that section be one and two to align with when code enforcement is actually here.
Okay. Councilmember Daly, you have a comment regarding that?
Respectfully, that doesn't make any sense, because if somebody violates the hours that we are allowing them to use the leaf blower, they may well be doing that before the code enforcement is on site anyway, and this is dealing with the use of electric leaf blowers. You know, if we establish the time at which you can begin to use an electric leaf blower at the moment that the code enforcement officer clocks in, and somebody decides to use the leaf blower at 5:00 in the morning, there's no code enforcement officer regardless. So I think it's irrelevant. Synchronizing those times is somewhat irrelevant.
Councilmember Flagler.
And as someone, and I agree, Councilmember Daly, as someone who recently did some work where the hours start in the weekday hours are different from the weekend hours, these hours do start before the code enforcement officers start working, and so it occurred to me that, let's say there, someone were to call it in, there wouldn't be a code enforcement officer. So there are other codes, just to your point, Vice Mayor, where we don't have the code enforcement officer on the clock yet, where someone could be violating our code. There's construction hours, there are other hours that start before the code enforcement officer starts working.
I totally understand those points. But we're getting specifically with the leaf blower, and we heard from the comments that some landscapers and gardeners are creating this system. It seems to me that if we limit the use of leaf blowers, which is specifically what we're trying to regulate with this particular ordinance, that it makes sense to align it with when code enforcement is here. I understand that someone could ignore it altogether, as he could with any other ordinance we have where hours are prescribed, but because we're specifically trying to enforce the leaf blower ordinance, it makes sense to maybe that we align it with the hours of when code enforcement is here, even more so because we heard that under our new court position policy, we're actually seeing results.
So Councilmember Leanne, can I go next, or do you want to make some comments? I'm going to address both. So I, although I empathize with Councilmember Flagler's suggestion, I can't support it for all the reasons in the discussion we previously had. And regarding this code enforcement suggestion, aligning the hours, I don't support that either, because then we'd be saying the permitted hours of operation are, what are the hours? Eight to five or something? And people, that means we're saying it's illegal to use a leaf blower at 6:00 PM. We can't say that. I mean, we're just not going to be enforcing the full hours that people, it's just the way it is. I mean, we can't say people can't use a leaf blower at 5:30.
The proposed ordinance does say 7 to 7.
Yes, exactly.
That was mirrored off of, because that's what our allowed construction hours are.
Yes, right.
So that's actually where that was derived from.
Yeah. So it is a valid concern that our ability to enforce no longer aligns with what we allow, but we're still capturing 80% or whatever of the hours. It's just, so I don't support changing that either. I don't know, Councilmember Daly, it didn't sound like you support. How do you feel about Councilmember Flagler's?
I don't think the code enforcement officer is working on Saturdays either.
Or Sundays. Right. So we have, we have. But in other words, you can't tell people that they can't use, because this permitted hours of operation, 10:00 AM to 7:00 PM on Sundays. I mean, people, you know, homeowners themselves. So I don't think we can align the code officer's schedule with the hours. Is that what you're saying, Councilmember Daly? Okay, so where do, yes.
I just realized something, just from my own experience, Mr. Zorn. Is the start time for Saturdays 8:00 AM, or is it also 7:00 AM? From experience, recent experience.
As proposed, or are you saying for construction hours?
For construction.
Construction hours on Saturdays, 9 to 6.
It's 9 to 6, so even later.
And 9, well, it's 9 to 6 for commercial and 9 to 3 for residential. So there's a little bit of difference for each zone.
So, but then we're not trying to mirror it with the leaf blower ordinance?
Well, so I usually try to say staff holistically is, you know, if someone's wrapping up something at the very end of a shift, then we're really more so, I mean, in practicality, enforcing the hard end dates of 7 to 7, which is the commercial construction hours, inevitably, just because that's, I mean, realistically, you might have some people that are just cleaning up on site. And so realistically, that's, again, just where we end up kind of coming to that kind of conclusion, is what's just the best practice and what we would see.
Okay. Councilmember Leanne.
I wouldn't change hours for Monday through, I would make it Monday through Friday, because I would think that we don't want people starting at 7:00 AM on Saturdays. That's my concern. And then my other concern is, we, I don't want to restrict hours so much, because people are small business people who are coming here and working here. And if we're just going to make the window even smaller, it'll make it harder for people to come here and work. So as far as changing it to make it a misdemeanor, I would be concerned, because if people knew that it would become a misdemeanor, we would have had more people coming here to provide comments, and that wouldn't be fair, because they should have known that to begin with if that was the direction we were going. So for both, you know, that's the only change I would make, is making perhaps a later start on Saturday, because Saturday morning at 7:00 is kind of early.
Okay, so let me see if I can summarize. We, you don't have support, Councilmember Flagler, and I know you don't have support, but we've had a number of different proposals for hours. I just, I would accept it. Oh, you have one more? Okay. So I would accept it as is, but go ahead, Councilmember Daly.
I really object to the prohibition of using leaf blowers on holidays. Not everybody has a yard crew. I sometimes work in the yard, and, boy, you know, Memorial Day or Labor Day weekend, those MLK weekend, when I get a three-day weekend, that's actually, those are the rare weekends when I do find a day to work in the yard, because I don't have to run around and take kids to softball and everything else. So, you know, three-day weekends are when people like to work in the yard. We should take that out.
I would support that.
Yeah, I would support that as well. Okay, so we have, we've had three things that are on the table. One, we've not supported, Vice Mayor, did you want to weigh in on the federal holidays?
I mean, it sounds like there's a part from everyone.
Okay, so we're deleting federal holidays, and I frankly don't know where exactly we stand now with the hours, Monday through Saturday, and on Sunday. We have one proposal, yeah.
Starting later Saturday. I think maybe 9 to 7 for Saturday and Sunday.
I feel like we're getting into micromanaging, and there must have been a rationale. You hear the concern is that why isn't Saturday also somewhat shorter like Sunday? Is there a change, or Saturday hours, 7 to 7, reflect construction hours as well? Is that what you're saying? Is that why that's there? No?
Not on weekends. No. No.
It's 9 to 6 on Saturdays. We don't allow construction at all on Sundays.
Yes.
So that's, that's where that is.
Do I have a proposal from somebody that we can all get behind? Councilmember Leanne?
No, I can support 8:00 AM, I think 9:00 AM maybe too. I think some are start.
Yeah, that's fine. 8 to 7.
8 to 7.
On Saturday, Sunday.
Saturday and Sunday.
Yes, Saturday and Sunday. I'm with the head.
Well, again, people will, if they do their own, will be using blowers in their own yard for, so we have to allow blowers on Sundays. So I think Sunday would be best to have the same hours on Saturday and Sunday, so it's not, so 9 to?
Oh, we said 8 to 7, right?
Okay, yeah, 8 to 7, okay. All right, Monday through Friday, 7 to 7, Saturdays and Sundays, 8 to 7 is what I think I heard. Okay, Councilmember Flagler?
Thank you, Mayor. I just have a question for Mr. Zorn's. In the violation letters that you send, is it possible to include these hours?
We would actually update the template that we already have. We just need to codify this first.
Okay, I think it would be very helpful to remind people, because people don't know these hours.
Yep. No, absolutely. So, and again, this is kind of changing it specifically to this standalone section, which is why it would be allowed.
Can I ask another question, Mayor?
All right.
So Director Zorn, if, after this passes, is there an opportunity to somehow get this in the newspaper so that we can do our due diligence in making people aware of this change in this ordinance? And I really think it's important for us to do our, to make people aware of what changes.
Yeah, so we have to put this as an adopted ordinance in the local paper of circulation, so there will be that formal process that we have to take pursuant to the government code. We obviously can also share this in the city manager's newsletter, which has several people that are subscribed to it. This is obviously something that would go out in the notice of violations that we are already doing, and we would now then create that new template. And I can probably guarantee that I'll get a call from Bruce at the Crier within the next week or two, asking me details about the specific ordinance in order for him to do his own editorial, you know, small, because he's been in contact with me previously from the Crier, doing their own stories. So we can definitely kind of take all those multiple components to make sure the community's well-informed.
And then my question is then to the city manager now, is, we used to utilize the outreach staff person to send messages on Nextdoor, and it's not just through a governmental, pushing, having to push the governmental button on Nextdoor. It's an email out to every Nextdoor Los Altos subscriber. So can we utilize that tool as well?
I can ask our PIO to advertise this on social media, yes.
Wonderful.
Okay, so I would like to motion regarding this ordinance. Do you have another question?
So Mayor, I actually have three proposed edits to the language. I'm only going to put one on the floor that I think really needs clarification. So Mr. Zorn's, under section 11.15.060A, Romanet 1, can we please add language after if different, a copy will also be sent, blah, blah, blah.
I have actually proposed language on that section.
Okay, let's put it together.
Okay, so I propose, if you can read in that section, nail to the property address where the violation occurred, and then I would strike the language up there, and I draft it to replace it. I thought the white control was doing anything anyway. I would replace that beginning after the word "and" to the address on file with the Santa Clara County tax collector, if that is different from the property address.
So could I combine them? So what I propose then, and, a copy will also be sent to the property owner's address as provided on the SEC tax rule, if different. I think we need to be clear that it's an additional copy that will be sent to the property owners.
Yeah, refer to that. Okay, is that clear? Or do, I mean, I support, that's fine. Was the wording clear, or do we need to reiterate it's clear? Okay, good. And is that the last one you're going to make? Okay, so we can take a motion regarding the ordinance. I think we just nailed down the 11.15.060A, Romanet 1? Romanet 1, okay, that's new, okay.
He's a trainee.
Yes. And so we, the other changes are in section 11.15.040 regarding hours and strike through. So Councilmember Daly, would you like to make a motion since you had some of the changes If not, I'll take another, but.
I moved that the city council of the city of Los Altos introduce and waive further reading of an ordinance, no, that's not what I, what do I intend?
Yeah.
I move that the city council of the city of Los Altos introduce and waive further reading of an ordinance of the city council of the city of Los Altos, adding chapter 11.15 to title 11, miscellaneous property regulations of the Los Altos municipal code, creating a standalone chapter for leaf blower regulations, and find that this action is exempt from environmental review pursuant to section 15061B, three of the state guidelines implementing the California Environmental Quality Act. of the state guidelines implementing the California Environmental Quality Act of 1970. With the modifications expressed from council. Okay.
And I think.
Eliminating the, the prohibition of use on federal holidays, adopting the hours of operation.
From Monday to, we, we only changed it from, um, Saturday, Saturday, Sunday hours from eight to seven. PM to seven PM, but the hours from Monday through Friday is seven AM to seven PM.
Correct.
With hours of operation Monday through Friday from seven AM to seven PM and Saturday and Sunday from eight AM to, to seven PM.
That's for a lecture, a lecture.
Yes.
Cause gas is totally prohibited, sorry. Now I lost my place.
But no, I think.
And then the language.
And then the language, including the language pertaining to. Section 11.15.060. As.
And Weinberg.
Proposed by Vice Mayor Weinberg and Councilmember Flagler.
Leading the witness.
Detailing that a second notification would be sent to the address on record for tax purposes if it's different than the address of the violation.
Okay, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Let's just go for it.
Councilmember Daly?
Yes.
Councilmember Flagler?
Yes.
Councilmember Liang?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Weinberg?
Can you read back the motion?
Yes. If you want me to. You're still fired.
Mayor Meadows.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. All right, we're going to move on to item nine. And, uh, sorry, nineteen.
Oh, real quick, and we, we're clear on direction on how to do outreach, right? Okay, thank you.
Okay, so item nineteen, which is an ordinance as well. And, uh, staff, would you care to introduce it? And this is another situation where we've already discussed the matter, May 2022. And this is ordinizing, ordinizing.
Codifying.
Codifying, there you go. Codifying what we talked about. Yes, exactly.
Guys better be careful, Missy Elliott's going to pop up out of nowhere. Um, all right, so tonight we're here to discuss, um, ordinance for, um, a proposal of mechanical equipment regulations.
Can I ask that you take the discussions outside? Yeah, okay.
Um, so just to make sure that, uh, if anybody's listening online, is, um, this evening we're here to discuss an ordinance for, um, proposed regulations for mechanical equipment. Um, history, uh, so this is probably as good as it's going to get, just because at that time our tentative council agenda didn't, um, record, uh, who made the, um, the, uh, request to add it to future agenda items and who seconded and thirded. But we did have it, um, as a part of that process, um, written down that we, um, were requested to bring back a draft ordinance that would address noise concerns for mechanical equipment inside yard setbacks. Um, the existing code, um, pretty easy. There's no regulations for, um, explicit location and setbacks for the location and sighting of mechanical equipment in the side yard, um, for, uh, any parcel or property in the city of Los Altos. I'm going to somewhat, um, just acknowledge, um, what the city has been doing, um, prior to last year, um, which is relied on an internet, internet-based data, um, that estimated, um, the noise generation and placement of mechanical equipment. Um, so saying if you hypothetically had a certain unit that had a decimal reading of a certain level, um, that it should be this far away from a property line, um, if you want to achieve your, um, noise, um, kind of, uh, performance metrics that's in the noise ordinance. Um, the existing regulations, um, in mechanical equipment, um, are going to have to continue to meet the noise performance metrics that are in the noise ordinance itself. Um, however, again, there is nothing that's black and white that's codified that requires, um, a specific distance from a property line. Um, so the proposed ordinance, um, it's pretty simple, um, and straightforward in that it is another standalone chapter in miscellaneous property, um, property regulations. Um, it defines what mechanical equipment is, uh, determines the applicability, provides general standards, and specifies requirements for roof-mounted equipment. I will just say is one of the reasons why there's specific detailing on, um, specific requirements on roof-mounted equipment is because that's something that we're starting to see less and less of, um, with new installations, uh, just because of not being able to meet the height, um, maximums or also noise performance metrics that had been previously applied, um, as well as even the engineering of having to have a more structurally stable roof, um, element to be able to mount those units to. It's also quite, um, onerous for maintenance of those units. Um, comparison regulations as a part of the, um, proposed ordinance, um, an agenda packet that was provided at the council for this evening. Um, mechanical equipment does differ greatly from city to city. Um, some effectively prohibit them within the side yard setbacks or setbacks altogether. Um, and others are generous and allow the, um, placement of mechanical equipment just a few feet away from a property line. Um, in all comparisons though, mechanical equipment, um, generally must adhere to the noise, um, performance standards that's contained within an ordinance. Um, but then that gets kind of tricky when you allow the sighting of it to be just a few feet away from a property line. Uh, so tonight, the recommendation with the proposed ordinance is to introduce and waive further reading of the ordinance, um, for the proposed mechanical equipment regulations. And I am here to discuss this ordinance, um, and any, any questions the council may have.
Thank you, Director Zorn's. Anyone have questions?
I don't have questions, but I have minutes.
Okay, we'll, we'll get there. Um, questions?
Questions?
I'm not seeing any questions, so we're going to, uh, take public comment. So if you're online, you can raise your hand. I have one card for Teresa Morris, um, for this item. And I don't see any other cards. So Teresa looks like our only speaker in chambers. And three minutes.
Great, thank you. Um, again, I'm a park and rec commissioner, but I'm not speaking as a park and rec commissioner. I'm speaking as a resident. Um, I have dealt with actually a number of residents and their air conditioning issues. And I'm thrilled to see that this is in front of you and that we're tightening up the rules for it. Um, I, and I know of one lawsuit currently underway due to air conditioning issues between neighbors. So I'm happy to see this. I know I'm coming at a late time and you've got the information of any, but one of the things that I'd like to point out is, I think, given the way houses are being built and how tight we're going to be getting, um, with our houses so closely together, I would like to just offer the idea of perhaps considering, in some situations, it may actually work to put an air conditioner in the front yard and it won't disturb other neighbors. Um, so I, I would almost, I know staff is probably just going to be like, oh, about this, but I'd almost suggest taking it on a somewhat case-by-case basis if the housing is very close together and to consider this idea of having it in the front. Um, in addition to that, as the air conditioning and mechanical, uh, equipment gets old, it starts to get noisier. So I have a neighbor who has such a noisy air conditioner and I like my windows open at night. And so it's just this constant noise. So I, I think it's important to consider not just when it's put in, but as it's going on in its life and how it's going to affect the neighbors. And sometimes even in a commercial district, you'll hear equipment blocks away and, and it's kind of stunning how loud it can get. But, um, the, the setbacks, I would say, for me, consider the front yard because I've certainly been in communities where it's in the front and nobody can hear it. So thank you for the time.
Thank you, Ms. Morris. Okay, um, I'm not seeing any online hands. So we're going to close public comment with this item and bring it back. Uh, Councilmember Liang, you said you have, uh, items to start the, uh, did you start the discussion?
Okay, just wanted to point out there are two sections, 11.14.030. Um, point one, section 1114020 is incomplete and should be amended to read, but is not limited to heat, heating or air conditioning, air conditioning units. Also, um.
Wait, wait a minute, can I ask you to clarify? I'm not sure that I understood what you said.
Section number again, please?
The 11.14.020.
And what, what is wrong with this?
We should also add to that sentence, but is not limited to heating or air conditioning units.
It's already there.
Well, then we should clarify that the, the, we should, um, expand on the definition. That's what it is. We need to expand on the definition because we've, we've talked about sump pumps.
What's your proposed language?
Okay, to add heat pumps, heat exchangers, condensers and water heating. Because I, we have examples of other people that do have it on the outside of their house. And I think it's important to cover all of these units.
So what are you reading from? Cause.
I'm adding the language.
But.
That water heater's inside?
No, not always.
Not always.
Wait, wait, wait.
So that's why I think it's important to add these. Like if you want to, 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 over here, to.
But are you reading the resolution or are you reading?
No, I'm, I'm, I'm including new language. I'm trying.
The version that I'm looking at has a lot of the things that you're suggesting adding.
Well, we should add it here.
11.14.
Ventilation, continue adding. To continue expanding the definition, yeah.
She wants more specific things called out in addition to the ones that are called out. So including but not limited to blah, 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 she has more to add.
Okay, so let me read it as it's written and then you say what you're adding that's, that you're suggesting adding that isn't in there. So right now it says includes but is not limited to heating or air conditioning units, sump pumps, generators and ventilation equipment and appurtenances, which I had to look up.
Then we can, then we can add heat, heat pumps, heat exchangers, condensers and water heater as well.
Even though it says includes but is not limited to?
Yes, because it's important to call it out because people have them outside. And why do they have them outside? Because we, we need to help identify them.
So your three were heat pumps?
Heat exchangers, condensers and water heating. Adding the four. And then my point number where this one should be eleven, the second section of 1114030, which should be 040. The language was confusing because, um, when I read it, it says if the setback requirement is four feet.
Which section?
The section 030.
Yeah.
There's two 030s.
Yeah, and then, cause it's, the, the language seems to be confusing for me. So I'm going to use an example. I'm going to use an example.
Well, tell us which part's confusing first.
Okay, the part that says no mechanical equipment and appurtenance shall be located closer than 10 feet from any property line when required side and rear yard setbacks of the zoning district are zero feet or no setback requirements. So it's confusing for me because, for example, if the setback requirement is four feet when someone has an ADU, we have no limit between the zero and 10 feet. And then we just need to be clear that we want equipment no less than 10 feet from a property line. Do you understand what I'm trying to say now?
I do, but.
Because to me it's not clear. And then like if someone has a side setback that's 10 feet, then it, it should be clear that it's the understanding that they cannot put equipment in that side setback. And also if they have an ADU, they have to put the equipment on the internal part of the property. So to me, that language needs to be cleaned up. And it should be perhaps read, no mechanical equipment and appurtenances shall be located close, closer than 10 feet from any property line when the required side yard and rear yard setbacks of the zoning district or as required by state law are less than 10 feet. That way it's clear that if they have a 10-foot setback, they cannot have equipment there. So that was my suggested language. Do you understand what I'm saying? Do you want to read my language?
So are those your two?
No, I have more.
You have more.
No mechanical equipment and appurtenance shall be located closer, I meant, than 10 feet from any property line.
Um, Director Zorn's, did you follow where this was going? Cause I must admit, I have not.
Yeah, it's, it's because, um, the roman numeral starts with the no at the front end versus saying it this way, which would be mechanical equipment and, um, the appurtenances shall not be located closer, um, than 10 feet from any property line. So it's to, it's to put, and, uh, to delete the no at the beginning and put, uh, a not after shall, I think is essentially still getting the same.
You're protecting the 10-foot setback.
Yeah.
She just doesn't, if it's.
Yeah, well, but he.
She's just protecting the 10-foot setback.
Right.
But then even if you take away the no, it'll still be confusing. Read it.
No, if it, he's saying just, it will say mechanical equipment and appurtenances shall not be located closer than 10 feet.
Well, you have to say that.
That's what he's saying.
That, that would be the amendment.
Shall not be, okay, then if you clean it up that way.
You got it.
Okay, thank you. Okay, now my next point.
That's the whole thing is to be making it noted on the inside of the property.
She's preserving what happened.
And the same, which should be.
Preserving what?
The 10-foot setback.
Yeah, that's what this says, so.
Well, it didn't say it, but we're going to clean it up.
All right, okay.
So we're going to put this and then shall not. Okay, that's what I'm clear on, like you said. And the other thing I, I, I felt that in 11.14.0, it should be 040. We should also have a line that says like this, any noise generating, um, um, mechanical, mechanical ground, we should say, ground, mechanical appurtenances shall be required to conduct a noise reading by a cer- certified acoustical consultant and furnish a signed letter indicating compliance with the ordinance. Cause we should have it.
Yeah.
You know what I'm trying to say?
I, I know what you're saying. So we would replace.
No, we're adding an I and a Romanet. If there's a complaint, well.
And somebody has to come take a noise measurement?
Well, if, if, if there's a complaint, when or, you know why? The problem is, under this ordinance, we don't have authority and enforcement if there's a violation of 6.6 in this ordinance. And somehow we should have it in there.
So right now it only has the roof mounted. She wants one for the ground.
Only if there's a complaint for the ground, right?
But whenever it says it's on the ground.
Yes, yes, because currently under.
But that section is roof mounted.
Right, so she wants to move it under the general standards.
So I'm going to slightly interject to explain where the thought process was this. So one, in the, and yes, the staff is already aware of the, just the, the section miss, um, the miss, um, type, um, misnumbering, thank you. Um, so subsection C was put in there specifically to be able to further relate it back to chapter 6.16. 6.16 is the noise ordinance for the city is a noise, is a performance metric ordinance. That means you, regardless of if you are. That means regardless of if you are complying with this chapter, you still have to provide a unit and maintain a unit that is always going to be consistent and compliant with the noise ordinance. You don't really want to co-mingle the two. You want to leave them separate to be able to have that further enforcement capability. Specifically to the requirement of an acoustical consultant to furnish the proof of compliance with chapter 6.16. The only reason why I drafted the ordinance to include that is because it's becoming increasingly less and less common for us to see roof-mounted AC units and things of that nature that are going to be something that it's not really... It's a nonstarter for certain things. But if that is the direction that someone wants to move because of the way that acoustics are, is that the potential for it to create an ongoing noise violation that would need to be further remedied and take a lot more work than just moving it down the way on the ground. That's why it was to get in front of that specifically because there's a potential for that. And that's not something that the code enforcement officer is ever going to be enforcing. They're not going on the roof to do that. So that's why it would be something that would be certified for that particular step. I would say it will be... We would be a very standalone jurisdiction to have a certification for acoustics for ground-mounted equipment. That's partly one of the reasons why we would move in the direction of not allowing it in the setback altogether. That's effectively how it's still achieved.
Go ahead, Councilmember.
So I don't want to speak for Councilmember Liang, and I... And thanks for that explanation, Mr. Zornz. And that makes sense, and I think C captures it where they still have to comply with the noise requirements. I think what I heard from Councilmember Liang, and this is not a form of support. I just want to make sure everybody understood what she was saying. She was asking two things. One, was to add that same certified acoustical consultant for the ground. But she was also saying maybe we could draft it so that we only require that consultant if there was a complaint about the ground mechanical equipment. So it wouldn't be automatic like what we have here for the roof for the reasons you stated. But I think what she was saying was it wouldn't be automatically required, but if there's a complaint, then we would require the owner to bring in an acoustical expert consultant.
But isn't that how this works anyway? I mean, that's what this is putting...
Well, in our ordinance, in nowhere is there authority and enforcement if there's a violation of 6.16.
It says... Well, it refers it to that.
Right. It says shall comply with that section.
Yeah, but shall comply with that section. But if you look at that section, there's no enforcement and authority. And that's why we have the complaints that have been coming in from some of the residents that were talking about the noise issues from their neighbors.
So Mr. Zornz, if someone violates this, what happens?
So there's nothing... I think we're kind of... Or again, we're co-mingling the two chapters. There is... With this ordinance, you're creating certainty for the placement of the location that there would be no violation to occur for the placing and sighting. 100% everything is the way proposed. Chapter 6.16 is fully in effect. The noise complaint officer, office, or the director of development services, I have the authority to enforce all of the decimal reading requirements as it has already been adopted in the ordinance. So again, you have your performance metric, and then you have your sighting of the actual equipment. So they are two different things. This is just a layer to help make sure that we're achieving it. Because at the end of the day, and we already have occurred this twice in the last year since I've taken the department under leadership, is we've had two people challenge us, and I have no ability to fight it. We don't have things in the code to even say what they have required in the past. Is that if you want to propose something different, then you can get an acoustical engineer. The enforcement, yes, we already have that in our noise ordinance is to be able to require an acoustical engineer to come out and do the reading to be able to verify if they do not agree with the code enforcement officer's reading. However, we don't have it baked in to the degree that I think the council has kind of discussed recently.
I'm still not done. It's because we... I'm disappointed because that we have not proposed clarification to 6.16 as referenced in some of the ordinances here. And then we had several unfortunate experiences where the ambiguities in 6.16 have caused problems in determining whether a noise source or equipment meets the noise requirements of the ordinance.
But that is not what's on the agenda. So if you want to propose something during future agenda items, I know it's contained within the ordinance, but we are not reviewing chapter 6.16 or referring to it. So if you want to propose something...
But if we're referring to it in this...
Yeah, but we're not editing it.
And like the other one, if people don't comply or if there's a problem, I think it's... Like he said, there is concern about enforcement.
Then you can bring it up in future agenda items if you're suggesting that, and we'll see if we have support. But we have to focus on what we're reviewing today. We're not making changes to sections we're referencing that are not in front of us tonight.
So, and I do want to just clarify because Councilmember Flagler has actually already identified this at the beginning of this item, is in chapter 6.16030, the powers and duties of the Noise Control Office, which is obviously the code enforcement division in development services. The noise control program established by this chapter shall be administered by planning and the police departments. That's obviously something that subsequently can get changed to say development services. But to go on, it says which shall be known as the Noise Control Office for the purposes of this chapter. Individuals trained in acoustical technology shall be employed to assist in the administration of this chapter. So that caveat, we can strengthen further with another ordinance cleanup when we go to the noise ordinance itself. But it does provide us the ability to require an acoustical specialist to be able to do the reading in time of an identified violation if there's a disagreement with what our code enforcement officer has taken as the reading.
Do you have any other comments that you want to bring up?
No, I'm... I'll address it like he said to fix 6.16. And we've discussed it, and he acknowledges we need to clean that up.
Okay, so does anyone else have any? Councilmember Daley?
Regarding the first 11.14.030, B, Romanet 1. If there is a legal non-conforming AC that quits and needs to be replaced, is that considered a voluntary replacement?
Can you clarify what you mean? I didn't understand your question.
If you have an air conditioner... So let's say you have a... Here's a real world... Let me put this in real-world terms. Let me put this in real-world terms, okay? Let's say somebody built a house five years ago in Los Altos, put their air conditioner in their side yard, and invested in a relatively quiet air conditioner so that they could do that, but it is less than 10 feet from the property boundary. Once we change this code, it will become legal non-conforming, correct?
Correct.
Now, what happens when that air conditioner reaches end of life and needs to be replaced? Is that considered a voluntary replacement? And would it therefore require reciting of the unit?
The language as proposed would, yes. The reason why other jurisdictions have gone in that same direction previously is that this is not something... A heater is something that is required under the Health and Safety Code. Air conditioning is not. It's considered, for all extensive purposes, a luxury that is not required in order to have a habitable space. However, I do want to identify this to the council. Legal non-conforming does not come into play with this. This was not provided and administered through zoning. So this is in the municipal code, and it... The vested rights that would be under for a non-conforming or legal nonconformance does not apply here.
But it's in the language of the ordinance. And so what I'm concerned about is a property owner whose air conditioner craps out, and it's legal non-conforming. It was, you know, legal and conforming under the previous ordinance or under the previous interpretation of the ordinance. And now that homeowner has to put that air conditioner someplace else, which involves a whole lot, ducting and so forth.
It could, but however, the only thing is, is depending on when that was actually permitted, is that there's Title 24 and hers testing requirements depending on the actual unit itself. There's a lot of different components that most homeowners don't follow when they install AC units by doing the proper things because they usually do it legally without a permit because it's a very hard thing for us to catch. So in all fairness, that's what we most commonly see. I know this is kind of splitting a little bit of the hairs, but I want to make sure the council is very well informed. It's extremely common that folks come in and say, oh, yeah, we're just doing a replacement. And planning and building staff are... What do you mean a replacement? You don't have an AC. And they did it after the fact without a permit. So that would be one of those things where legal nonconformance only comes into effect when something was actually lawfully permitted previously. And it would be, for all extensive purposes, is legal nonconformance. And it is legally nonconforming because it was lawfully permitted prior to the enactment of this chapter of the code, meaning that we're not going to force you to remove it until, like you said, it craps out or until you willingly want to change the unit. So it's allowed to legally exist, and that's the whole premise of legal nonconformance.
I understand that. And there are situations where homeowners have, you know, done a major renovation and, you know, construction project on their home and have, you know, invested in a unit that produces less noise in order to be able to place it within 10 feet of the property line. That is one example of legal nonconformance. There may be other examples where the air conditioner is, you know, even older. I mean, anyway, I don't want to create an ordinance that requires homeowners to reduct their home because their air conditioner craps out. And I know that air conditioners are considered a luxury, but the way the climate has been changing, you know, we are very seriously looking at investing in cooling centers for our vulnerable citizens. And this has the potential to, at least in some circumstances, you know, exacerbate the threat that our vulnerable citizens face.
So what are you proposing, Councilmember Daley?
I would propose language change that allows replacement of a legal nonconforming unit in the event that it fails.
Councilmember Flagler?
Thank you, Mayor. I actually thought Councilmember Daley was going somewhere else with this section. But I understand what he's saying, and I don't agree, Councilmember Daley, with where you ended up. I thought what you were saying was where it says voluntary. If someone because... Not because they choose to, but it stops working, then that equipment now would have to comply with the existing law. And I think that's the way it should be. If what I'm hearing is you're proposing that if they're already under legal nonconforming status and it stops working beyond their... It has nothing to do with any act or omission on their part. We should still give them that legal nonconforming status.
Yes, and we are still protected or their neighbors are still protected by our noise ordinance. So, you know, in the extreme, if somebody has an air conditioner that sounds like a baseball inside an empty paint can in a shaker at Home Depot, even if it's 50 feet from the property line, we can cite them for that, right? But if you have a legal nonconforming unit that fails and you have to replace it, you should be able to replace it provided that you're still in compliance with the noise ordinance, which in effect almost extends, almost grandfathers, the existing code environment for that particular unit. Because until we make this change, a homeowner can put an air conditioning unit closer than 10 feet to the property line if it's relatively quiet, if it meets the noise ordinance, and if they have documentation that supports that. And that's not as rare as... It's not actually that rare. It's actually really common in situations where people are undertaking a construction project. Because as we all know, people want to push their... The envelope of their, you know, of their dwelling to as far as possible. And, you know, then they want to maximize the utility of their backyard. So they're going to try and... They're going to spend the extra money to get a quieter unit and put it in the side yard. There's... I guarantee you, there are plenty of air conditioning units that would be legal nonconforming units right now. And if people... If our residents have to replace them and you have to move that air conditioning unit, that is a major, major, major undertaking. And it involves basically redesigning and reconfiguring your HVAC system in your home.
Our city manager, go ahead.
If council supports that change, I think it's fine. The term we're going to use will not be legal nonconforming. But based on that principle, as long as the nonconformance is not increased at replacement, I think it will be fine. So if they're within the side yard setback and they need to replace it because the air conditioner longer works, they can't get closer to their neighbor's property, but they could replace it in the established position that it's in. So if council supports that change, we can amend the ordinance.
Well, I don't know that I support that change. I mean...
There's a lot of discussion, aren't there?
Sorry, I just...
If council supports a change, that's how we would address it. If council doesn't support the change, then we wouldn't change it, obviously.
Yeah, so let's determine that. I mean, I understand the concern, but I also think it defeats the purpose if we're not going to require people to make an attempt to conform. Maybe the issue is you make an attempt to conform and with, you know, suitable documentation, while you can't. This obviously wouldn't be the wording. Then perhaps there could be a legal nonconforming carried forward. But you can't just let people just do it because they want to, so...
I suppose residents who find themselves in that pickle can come to us and ask for a variance.
Yeah.
Exactly, exactly. And there's a variance section in 6.16 if I remember reading that section correctly with the NCO. And a great point, Mayor. I agree with that. And also, you know, we may end up... How do we prove that it really just stopped working versus it being voluntary where they want to replace it? Right? So I agree. I agree.
All right, so it sounds like we're sticking with it as written. All right. Are there other proposed? And then we haven't really gone through with Councilmember Liang's and decided whether we agree or disagree with it. She has proposed. Do I hear any other proposals? Councilmember Flagler?
I just have one small suggestion, Mr. Zornz. Where we talk about how the equipment should be screened from public view, by chance, can we include a diagram? And recently, I found a diagram very helpful in what the screening should look like, if it's possible. I know for other things, you know, pool pumps, you have a diagram about how you screen it from the public view. So if it's possible to include a diagram, I think that would be helpful. If there's support for that.
Yeah, I would support that as well. Okay. So I hesitate to say this, but I didn't check whether we agreed with the proposals that you made, Councilmember Liang. Could you give us... Just numerically, you don't have to repeat it. Tell me what section numbers?
I expanded the definition.
Okay, all right. So let's stop right there then. We had the proposal to say more than includes but is not limited to various items, and Councilmember had a number of additional items. I don't feel strongly about it because the language as written includes pretty much anything else. else. Does anyone else want to support adding additional, um, pieces of equipment to the list in .020?
I'll support it, Mayor.
All four of them, including the water heater?
Unless there's a staff concern, I really don't think it hurts to list out, um, more equipment under this definition.
I mean, I'm indifferent about it. I think, I personally think it's already covered under this because it's under general of the heating and air conditioning units, some pumps generators, um, ventilation equipment. And I think it's covered under that, but that's.
It says in similar appurtenances, right?
Yeah. To me, as much as we can provide clarity, the better.
Councilmember Daly?
I, I think my colleague, uh, Councilmember Liang is, is, is correct because the way it's worded right now, anything could be covered by this. And I don't think that that's our intention. And I frankly don't think that every single piece of equipment is a legitimate noise concern. A, a, a tankless hot water heater does not make the same kind of noise that an air conditioner or a generator makes.
Okay, so you're supporting the proposal?
Wait, wait, wait. I'm, I'm really confused. So the proposal down there was to make it broader. You want to add more things to make it narrower?
No, I, I think, I think philosophically, we should specify what kind of equipment we're talking about because the way it's written right now, it could be any kind of equipment, any kind of equipment.
Even with the change, it could still be any kind of equipment.
Yes, because it said, but it's not limited to.
It could be, it could be, it could be. My problem with the wording, my problem with the wording is, is that.
If you've got three who want to do it, fine. I think it's fine the way it is. I would leave it alone.
May I, may I please finish my remark? My, my problem with the wording is that it is, is the phrase includes, but is not limited Because it can be, uh, limitless in that way.
But the proposed modification doesn't eliminate those words.
I am expressing that I am concerned about the wording. I am not saying that I agree completely with the wording that Councilmember Liang has suggested. My problem is that the includes, but is not limited to phrase could mean, you know, anything. It could mean anything.
This isn't a chapter called mechanical equipment. It's referring to households. It's not, I mean.
I, I, I'm confused because what you are supporting includes the words that you just said you are concerned about.
I'm not supporting, I'm not supporting the use of the words included, but not limited to.
So you're supporting adding those things in, but taking out the words?
Because, 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 right? We're using the phrase included, but includes, but not limit, or including, but not limited to as a, as a, as a substitute for specifying the type of equipment we want to, the specific equipment that we want to regulate. And I think we should be more specific.
Because it is unrealistic to be able to include every single piece of equipment that this might include. And by not including the right, all the right ones, then we will be by definition excluding without that term, you know, is, is not limited to.
I, I think Pete, you're, you're making a very cogent argument to me that you want very specific as to what this, this, the, this code section will apply to.
Yes.
But when you say you agree with what was proposed down there, that's where I'm confused because what was proposed down there was to keep in, it was just to provide more examples, but to leave in the language of which is critical there, which is what is not limited to.
I suggest language along the following lines. Heating, ventilation and air conditioning equipment, comma, water heaters, generators. Those are heating, ventilation and air conditioning. That, that comes under HVAC, okay? So these are the types of equipment that we want to regulate. We don't want somebody to come along and say, okay, here's a piece of mechanical equipment. It's not, uh,
Okay, I'm going to throw my weight behind this motion so we can move off of this. I don't think this is a, it's just not constructive. We cannot possibly include every potential mechanical thing, nor can we exclude every fanciful mechanical thing that someone can choose to bring into their yard, so.
Mayor, do you have a, what about the language I specifically just proposed?
No, I'm, I'm just not, I, I just don't see, unless someone else wants to, does anyone support Councilmember Daly's?
No. So Mayor, I agree with you and you raised the exact same concern I had, where if you limit the list, we may exclude something unintentionally. So we do, but is not limited to the list in the draft, the additions from Councilmember Liang and maybe add it with, and similar equipment. So that we don't go down the road where I think, because we're daily is going, yes, and similar type equipment.
Similar mechanical?
Exactly.
Okay, my next one.
Residential mechanical equipment.
And then cleaning up the numbers, of course. And then the, um, and then under 11.14.040, um, the suggested language to clean this up was to, to take away the no under the, um, Romanate under A was eliminate the word no and put the word, um, after mechanical equipment and appurtenances shall, and then add the word not.
Yes, I think they've got that. Okay, we support that.
And, yeah, the other one went, that's our future agenda. Yep, I'll work on that later. That was my recommendation.
May I, I have a motion. I think she just made it, right?
Super.
Okay, all right. And we've got a second city clerk.
Councilmember Daly?
Yes.
Councilmember Flagler?
Yes.
Councilmember Liang?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Weinberg?
As amended?
Yes.
Mayor Mettos?
Yes.
Motion carries?
As amended.
As amended, yes. Okay, I think we spelled that out in excruciating detail. So, um, we're going to move ahead to item number 20, discuss and considering, consider taking positions on various Senate and Assembly bills. Councilmember Flagler, would you like to lead us through this discussion?
I am happy to, Mayor, and based on the time, um, there's six bills. So I don't know if we have time, depending on how the discussion goes. Um, I propose that we start with SB 423, since that's the one, um, Councilmember Liang had asked us to bring forward. Um, and just quick summary, um, it's being proposed by State Senator Weiner. It's the land use streamlined, um, housing approval and basically it's extending SB 35 that was adopted, um, in 2017 to, um, extend through 2036.
Is this a Lou's staff report or just asking?
I'm staff.
You are staff.
I'm staff. I'm staff. And, and I think everybody's familiar with SB 35, um, where it's, you know, certain projects have a certain number of affordable units, then that project would qualify, um, to move through the process much faster, more streamlined process. Um, and Senator Weiner is proposing this. He is, he and supporters point to the number of housing units that have been built since SB 35, including jurisdictions, um, that don't historically build a lot of housing units. They have that data. Their opponents of SB 423, which they're concerned with the continuation of streamlining these processes, heights of buildings, local zoning requirements, um, no longer get factored in. And so those are the two high points, um, in support and in opposition of SB 423.
Okay, Councilmember Liang, would you like to, um, make a pitch?
Yeah, I would not support, um, SB 423. I think we've all had experiences with SB 35. We have not cleaned up SB 35. And if we're going to continue that to, um, and allow that to continue on, we're going to find more issues that we're confronting and it's going to put cities in a bind to have to defend our positions and face more, um, litigation to that fact. I think our experiences alone should be clear that we don't want to extend SB 35, um, until it's cleaned up. So I think that, you know, streamlining, I understand your concerns, but our personal experience has taught us, we should not be supporting this. So, um, I don't know. Unfortunately, um, Councilmember Daly was not with us when we had to deal with, um, litigation involving SB 35. So I just, I can't.
You guys came in that day?
No, Sally was here.
Well, the, the, we were already, we're at the tail end of cleanup. We weren't there when we got in.
It wasn't. Oh, oh, okay, I'm sorry. I thought you guys were here. So I'm sorry. And I think it was made very clear that SB 35 was problematic. And if we don't recognize it and we're just going to think that supporting this right now is a good thing, then we haven't learned our lesson.
So may I ask you a question? I heard you say it needs cleanup. So are you proposing support if amended? Is that what I hear? Cause you're saying you want to amend SB 35? Or are you saying to oppose it?
They're not going to go back and clean up SB 35 and that's the trouble.
No, no. As part of SB 423, they're already doing cleanup from SB 35.
But the, the cleanup that I see is not in the direction that we want.
Well, that's what the mayor's saying. We can put that in our letter, if that's what you're suggesting, saying these are additional changes we would like to see made to SB 35.
That means I have to bring the language of what I want, how I want SB 35 amended because I think that I would need the assistance of, I'm not the best at crafting that language, but I think the points raised by our, um, legal counsel that we had at that time.
So let, um,
And I can't, and I can't speak to it because that's all closed session items.
Right. So let me, uh, check with our colleagues and see. Vice Mayor?
I, I need to ask the Councilmember a question. She started off her opposition by saying that a problem with 423 is not being cleaned up. So she started off her statements by saying 423 is problematic because 35 has not been cleaned up. And then I thought that I heard Councilmember Flagler say, what would you do to clean it up? And I'm not, and now I'm hearing, I don't know what I would do to clean it up. So is it just, is it that you want it cleaned up or you think it needs to be cleaned up? Or you just want to oppose it?
Well, I, I would like to send a strong message to oppose it.
Okay, so you want to oppose it. Now I understand, thank you.
All right. How, uh, how do my colleagues feel about opposing SB 423? Vice Mayor?
Uh, I believe that California has a housing crisis. I think that the policies set in Sacramento are designed to address the housing crisis. I think that the housing crisis requires regional solutions. I do not oppose SB 35 and I do not oppose 423. If we were to take a position, I believe that I would be in favor of it, but I am also fine not taking, the city not taking a position whatsoever.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Councilmember Daly?
I think we should support it.
Councilmember Flagler?
I think we should send a support letter, Mayor. And in that letter, I, I actually intentionally included a draft letter related to SB 4, but the language in SB 4 has been, it's, it's, people have looked at this letter because they like how this letter is framed, where Cal cities supported SB 4, but then added the changes they would like to see made. Right? So, and, and I think that's a good model for us as a city, um, to support these housing bills, especially the parts that we think will benefit our community. But there, if there are areas that we want to see changes in that letter, we mention them. And so that's why I appreciated us asking Councilmember Liang, what are the specific changes? Because now is the time to do it. What are the specific changes we would like included in our letter to say, you know, please consider these amendments and this is why?
Okay, um, so I'm also not willing to oppose it. I would have been fine not taking a position, but if, if my colleagues are suggesting we say a support if amended, then I'm willing to consider, uh, those proposals.
What, the reason why you, I would, the one clear thing that we need to, to make sure that you amend is the provisions to the coastal zone. It's now allowing SB 35 projects in the coastal zone. I think that's a, a concern that we had, um, that, you know, many people have and.
But we're not at.
I know that, no, that, that's not, that many, not, sorry, I made a mistake.
You're standing in solidarity with the coastal zone cities?
Well, I'm trying to express many of the concerns I've heard.
Okay.
I'm sorry.
That's okay.
And also the sun, removing of the sunset condition of, um, SB 35 and making the statute permanent is a concern for me. And the fact that allowing the state to approve housing developments on property they own or lease, um, we should have a different process for that. And, um, it prohibits a city from enforcing its inclusionary zoning. And that's a concern.
What does 423 does?
SB 35 and S and 423. Yeah, cause by allowing, by supporting 423, you're going to allow all these things to happen.
It's tied to the income limits, but yes.
So.
So I don't think, we don't, I don't feel like we have the letter in front of us. You provided an example in SB 4 of an approach we should take, I can support that as an approach, but we don't have, I don't think we can sit here and try to draft a letter. So how, uh, how would you recommend we approach this?
I do think we have one more meeting, Mayor, where I can put together a proposed letter based on this discussion and bring it forward to July 13th, if that's the council's wish.
July 11th.
July 11th, yes. Yes. All right. And do we have support for that? We'll have a, a letter come forward that, uh, supports, uh, if amended with some specific, uh, points. Okay, I would support that. All right. I think you have, looks like uniform of support comes up, right?
Then let's go to SB 4, since I included a letter. Um, and this is regarding, um, independent institutions. It could be university owner religious institutions, education or religious institutions. And again, what we have seen with the different housing bills, um, this year more than other years is, um, identifying office conversion, religious institution owned buildings, um, existing residential dwellings that will be converted to affordable housing, to figure out how to streamline the processes so we can get more housing built. So SB 4 does that with higher education and religious institutions where if they qualify, then they also should be fast tracked and go through a streamlined process. Um, we already adopted our objective standards two years ago, and so they would still have to comply with our objective standards. But for the most part, we'd be able to streamline and make it easier for these properties to get approved if they're applying to build housing on these properties.
Can I ask a question of Director Zornz? So this is, right? I have a mushy tail.
Still here.
Um, so this is not a program that we currently have in our housing element, but if we supported something like this and it were to pass, that is an additional, um, good faith. I mean, it could be like added or, assuming this were even to pass and move forward. Does it, does it help us? Does it, does it help us if we took action like this?
There's already the religious institution parking lot that can be converted.
So what, what's the, what's the difference of SB 4 in relationship to what we're saying? That what we would do if it were to come into effect and we took local action on it?
So SB 4 is related to help the religious institutions and the educational institutions, where if they have a project where they want to build 100% affordable housing units on their property, this would allow, and they have to meet certain criteria. This would require all cities, not just Los Altos who may voluntarily choose to do it, it would require all cities to fast-track these applications, provided they meet certain criteria.
This just isn't the housing on the religious institution parking lots?
No.
It goes beyond that? It goes beyond that?
It does go beyond it because it says owned. So-
Well, you know, the, there is that, the bill that has passed a couple of years ago that allows religious institutions to put housing on their parking lots-
Yeah, right.
And decrease their parking. And it doesn't mean they have to get rid of the religious institution building, but this would be, they could change everything. Take the church away and build-
Yeah, take the church away, build housing, but it has to meet certain criteria. It also limits the parking requirements. It limits the parking requirements that we can impose on them. It's basically making it easier for religious and educational institutions to build housing on their properties. That is the intent of this bill.
Yeah, so, I mean, just at a glance, looking at it even from Senator Weiner's official website, is, it creates by right affordable housing on all religious institution sites. So right now, we only have identified a specific site, or sites. This would then open the door for all religiously zoned sites or developed sites to be redeveloped with the streamlined ministerial actions that all of the other housing laws have come into effect with. The affordability criteria, just, I also want to point out, is the reason why SB 35 specifically says you can't enforce your inclusionary, it's because the conflict that West Hollywood was doing with density bonus and inclusionary was like trying to double dip on top of each other and stack it, because SB 35 already requires a certain level of affordability. That's what the provisions are. You can't then go above and beyond on top of it. So that's there where, because HCD has come out with a few memos talking about the stacking, and actually Eric requested a memo that HCD said they would not opine on, and then they opined a year later, and sent it to us, just like, hey, we just sent this, by the way, guys. So that's, that's where they're really trying to lock down, is you can't continue to keep stacking the ordinances.
Right. That makes sense. And then on SB 4, just one more thing, and this doesn't require these religious institutions to build housing. You know what I mean? But if they choose to and they want to, we want to make the process easier for them. That is the point.
It, it would effectively create essentially an overlay almost, just by virtue of the, the passage of SB 4, where you now have the option to develop as a residential site if you meet these criteria-
Yes.
If it's already zoned or developed as a religious site.
So Councilmember Flagler, are you proposing that we adopt a letter like the, like Cal Cities?
I am.
In this letter, exactly?
Yes, and people like this letter, yes.
Okay. Vice Mayor.
So the, the Cal Cities letter is support if amended. So Cal Cities wants, wants the legislature to take out-
Building heights and parking-
Building heights and parking requirement. And you, your proposal, will you do the same, or?
I, I, I do. I, I, I mean, I, I support streamlining the process and, and making it easier for religious institutions and educational institutions to build housing on their property. But I would want some flexibility as a city to work with them on height, depending on where they're located in our city, and for parking requirements.
Okay. I, I would support that position. I would support the position of support without amending, or I would support not taking a position at all.
I would support this, the LEAK type letter that you provided us. Because I, I do think that to have, we have objective standards for a reason. It would be helpful if we could apply our objective standards and just streamline the development, which is useful, but still have it fit in with the objective standards that we have locally.
So Mayor, I want to ask, because if we're going to follow the LEAK, I don't think it was made clear that SB 423, the League, California League of Cities opposed SB 423. So I just want to-
So on that one, we, we can talk about that. I'm, I'm just saying that on SB 4, that I'm willing to, for us to have a letter, I support a letter like the one that Councilmember Flagler has shown us regarding SB 4. And I heard that the Vice Mayor could support that, along with another, a number of other options. Councilmember Daly.
I would support it without amendment. I could be drug along with amendment.
Okay.
I think it's better to have the amendment.
All right. So can we say, I think we've got three that are veering towards with amendment, and you guys will go along with that, or?
Hey, I mean, I, I think Pete's right.
Mm-hmm. To do, to not amend.
Are you, how, how strongly do you want to include the amendment language?
I think many of our residents would want us to raise these proposed amendments. Do I think that these amendments will get done? Highly unlikely. I think there is support for SB 4, but with Cal Cities pushing for these changes, and more cities writing in, asking for some modification on flexibility regarding building heights. And when you think about the different parcels in Los Altos, where we do have parcels owned by religious institutions, I think for our city, if we can have flexibility on height and parking, we'll still build the 100% affordable housing. But if there's, if, if we can get this flexibility, I actually think it would be better received by the community.
I mean, I, I support with, I guess the question is, does a third one of us support no, no amendments? And I think three of us favor amendments. I favor it because the churches are all in residential areas. I do think that it's important that our objective standards have some applicability. If possible, we recommend that.
So the three of you all want to go with the Cal Cities model?
Yeah.
Okay.
Councilmember Daly.
Would you, would any of my colleagues be amenable to supporting the amendment pertaining to height, but not parking? I would strip the reference to parking.
Well, what's the base case in SB 4? No requirements, or what?
It, it limits parking requirements.
Can I ask for one of my colleagues that has more expertise on this, or perhaps a member of staff, to tell us what the parking requirements are for all affordable housing Generally though, generally though, parking requirements are far reduced for all affordable housing. And-
And that this is not going to be any difference.
Density bonus, you can have reduced parking, and then when you're with half-mile transit, you can have reduced parking or no parking. And if you're 100% affordable and a half-mile from transit, you get super density, no parking and no height limit, or something like that, so.
Well, and I, I just want to, I mean, it's the pleasure of the council. The adopted housing element that we created and crafted additional language after our first official comment letter post-adoption, we are going to be amending the code to explicitly require parking consistent with the ratios that are in density bonus. I don't really think the state will stray too far from that ratio, so for this particular type of a provision, and obviously, any development would be able to execute it. So it's, it's really up the pleasure of the council for your own legislative affair.
So it doesn't make a lot of difference.
Well, I think it does.
Here's my concern. Here's my concern. Again, I don't think that there will be an amendment that pertains to parking that goes beyond the sort of existing ratios that we see in, in other carved-out housing situations. But when you, I think there is a, a, a public perception that when jurisdictions complain about parking requirements, it is very much perceived as an anti-housing type of complaint. And so, to me, it, it, it comes across as, you know, to, to use a colloquialism that may not be the most ideal, but it comes across as kind of nimbys.
I, I think Pete has a point, and I also point out an emphasis of that, that we have got our-
But Director Zorn's just said, I mean, our requirements are dictated already by the state laws that govern affordable housing. So we're, it's not like we're putting, you know, every place has to have five parking spaces. This is not about that. This is defaulting to our already dictated affordable housing type parking requirements anyway. So it's kind of a, I, I understand what you're saying.
So why ask for the amendment on parking?
So the ship has sailed where we are when it comes to the existing parking ratios required with affordable housing development. I think where the LEAK is going, and the concern is, it's going to even reduce it more. I mean, that is the concern. And if in our housing element update, I think we should draft the language that's consistent with what we said in the housing element update, that we're going to comply as we should and will. This is talking about future laws. We will comply with the existing law, and we'll comply with what we said in our housing element update. But that's where I think these different asks are coming from. We've already reduced parking, we're, we're fine with that, we understand why, but to the extent possible, let's not limit parking requirements anymore.
I mean, that is how I'm looking at it. I'm not looking at it as, you know, two per each bedroom and this and that, you know, none of that. It's, you know, we've already got limits on our parking, so that's why, so I would read it that way. I can see what, and who knows which interpretation is the correct one to read. So I'm still comfortable with this example that's in front of us.
You're taking the language from Cal Cities, right? That allows-
Yes, on, on SB 4 with the amended for, and again, the height requirements are the same thing. We've committed to things in the housing element, it's not, you know, so, you know, so these are already, you know, heights is determined by all the state laws, parking is determined by all the state laws. So, so are you guys willing to support the with amendment, if amended, or not?
Well, you have three that already want to do that, so I, I, I don't oppose.
Well, do you want to not do a letter? If you don't want to do a letter, then I'm okay with not doing a letter.
No, I'd rather do the latter with the, the support if amended, as opposed to not doing the letter. Me, too.
Okay. All right. So we've got that. So if it's going to be exactly as this, that doesn't need to come back?
Well, yeah. But I, the point I would like to make is, it is important that we, it says for local, it says for, to allow the local jurisdiction to continue to determine the building and parking requirements. It's important for us to, to make sure we allow our public, our residents, our community to come back and, and, and state to us what their concerns are, and we have an opportunity to address it. If we don't allow local jurisdictions to, to have a say, then, you know, it's, it's taking away local control.
But that's what we've agreed. So that's how it is. Yes, Councilmember Flagler.
Thank you, Mayor. Just two points. I actually think, based on the discussion, we would need to change that third paragraph to say if amended, to clarify that, you know, building heights and parking requirements are maintained based on the existing state law.
I think that's a good point, because, yeah.
And then the second point, Mayor, just going back to what Councilmember Liang said about Weiner's SB 423, that I am bringing back, and she's correct. Cal Cities has a letter currently opposing it because they have some proposed changes, and I know they're working through the legislature on that. So when I bring that back, I think that would be a good time to look at what the Cal Cities position is at that time.
Okay. So you'll bring back a suggestion around 423?
Yes.
I don't know that, it sounds like SB 4, well, you're going to make some changes, just slight tweaks.
Yep.
So that can come back. We shouldn't really have to discuss it, we'll just see it in its final form. All right. I don't know about the, you guys, but I'm good with just those two?
Yep.
Yeah? Okay. All right. Thank you, Councilmember Flagler, for taking us through that. We had a couple informational items. The, I appreciate receiving the after-action report, the emergency event. Oh, we lost it. We lost the chief.
Locked in.
Locked in. Yeah. I, I did think the public comment about, you know, any learnings and how the, you know, resilient Los Altos, all the BAT certs, hands can help, because we should continue with our, our learnings from that experience. I've tried to incorporate some at home as well. So, does anyone have, so future agenda items or council reports? So future agenda item, let me just start off with our, the sheriff's race, I guess, will get information on what they were proposing?
Mayor, that'll, that'll be within my authority and the ordinance.
Okay. Okay, good. Thank you. Perfect. All right. Vice Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. For future agenda items, I think we should agendize who is going to be our voting member and alternate for the Cal Cities convention.
Okay. And, oh, city clerk.
I actually, I can touch on that. I actually reached out to Cal Cities today because we have not yet received that, and that's pretty unusual by now. We should have received it. So I felt, I asked them to send me the voting delegate form so that we can put it on the July 11th agenda, so that we can designate a voting delegate for the annual conference.
For the September?
For the September annual conference in September.
Okay. Yes.
I didn't even need a second or a third.
All right. And so that means we need to decide who, if we're going.
Am I going?
Yeah, well, yeah, no, I was thinking I would go. Yeah, I could be the, yeah, exactly.
If you, if you plan on going in, you haven't let myself or Adalina know, please do quickly because-
Did you ask? I, I don't recall seeing that.
I'm not sure if Angel did-
No, I don't, I didn't see it.
Previously, but if you want to go, let us know.
Oh, maybe they did, and I just, yes, so I will go.
Okay.
So are we all going?
Yes.
Yeah. So I'm going.
I'm going.
I, I don't know, I have a trial tentative.
Okay. All right. And, and looks like Councilmember Daly's still thinking about it. Okay? Other? Let's, they'll send you the information. Jolie sent something yesterday.
It's the end of September, I believe it's September 20th through-
The 22nd or something like that, yes.
I washed my hair.
We-
Wow.
I'll put that in a minute. We will need to know sooner rather than later. It's my understanding the hotels are selling out very quickly, so.
So do I? Okay, we'll talk. Yeah, okay. All right. So future agenda items, other future agenda items, and then yours? Yes, Councilmember Liang.
Future agenda items, I wanted to talk about the buyback and rebate program for gas-powered leaf blowers. Is that a yet nod yes? That you would be open for that discussion?
No, I was just nodding.
Sleepy?
Sleepy?
I was acknowledging that I knew you were going to ask that one. I'm looking at my...
Yeah, I, I'm not going to support that. I just think it's, we have a lot of things going on and...
Well, that's why I wanted to have that discussion then, since we can, could have provided direction to our staff at that time, and it would have been cleaner. Because when we were talking about the ordinance, at that time, he mentioned about how, and you told me, well, then bring it up, future agenda.
Yeah, no, now you're bringing it up, and now we can see whether you have any support. I'm not sensing any, so, but you can bring it up the next time, too.
Okay.
Maybe somebody will change their mind.
Okay, I'll continue to bring it up.
That's, you are persistent. That's good.
We need to, I'd like to bring back the discussion and clean up for that part of 6.16. I think as our director has stated, we need to talk about it and clean that up and get a consultant to, to look at that. So, thank you.
So I support bringing back whenever staff thinks it's time, but I do think 6.16 needs some cleanup. I do.
Yeah. And, and I think it's key is whenever the timing is right, and I don't know how it fits in with all the HU things that keep coming.
I'll be as transparent as possible. We have some pressing requirements with our housing element. I'm hoping that a couple of the consultant contracts that are required and already budgeted for come in a little bit under budget, and then the residual can be utilized to do that. So I would imagine that that would be like the end of the year, start of next year potentially at the earliest, because we do need some critical time to get some things done.
All right. So it should go on then as, you know, on the list, but not, it doesn't take, yeah.
And then I, I think I saw Councilmember Daley nod yes. You were nodding real yes, not like Councilmember Flagler or there, because then, then, then the staff can bring the report.
Well, they will. It's just a matter of timing.
But it takes three. So I just, making sure.
Yeah. It's just a matter of timing. Well, it'll be coming next time.
Okay.
Yes.
And my third one is, again, like you said, I'm scared about being persistent.
Yep.
I think there's a lot of lessons learned on how we can benefit from a lobbyist. I think I've seen and heard that a lobbyist was beneficial in helping Los Altos Hills get their housing element through. So I think it would be great if we could have a discussion of a lobbyist, whether or not we want to pursue a lobbyist. And also, that would be helpful to keep us on track to, to stay up on, you know, legislation as well.
All right. Is there any support for that? I'm not sensing any support for that.
Okay, I'll keep asking.
Next housing element, though, darn tootin', we're getting a lobbyist.
Eight years from now, Mayor.
Maybe two weeks from now. Well...
Report out. Do you want to...
Yeah, if you, we can do a...
I can wait till after everybody does their future agenda items and do my report.
Well, I'm kind of doing it all at once because I don't know.
And I attended a tour of Al Camino's new orchard pavilion, women's and newborn services, maternity and NICU ward, and that was pretty exciting. So I'm, I, I'm, I was, it's wonderful to see the new facilities for the new mothers and to hear the stories of how their services benefited those who needed the NICU at Al Camino Hospital.
Excellent. All right. Anyone else have a vice mayor?
Earlier this week, I attended a tour of the Guadalupe Light Train facility, the Yard. It was absolutely fascinating. There were a number of other electeds there. There was an opportunity to meet a lot of different employees. The VTA really, the, the more you learn about the VTA, the more impressive it is. I also want to note that on July 4th, the city is having a, a party, come one, come all. My children and I are going to be volunteering from seven to four, so come on over and say hello. The Arts and Wine Festival is also on the 8th before our next meeting, and Noah and I will be volunteering there as well. So again, if you're around, come by and say hello to us and enjoy.
So I have no future agenda items, but if it's okay with you, Mayor, I can give a quick report out on our NCLA meeting from yesterday?
Oh, that's good.
Real quick.
Yeah, concise.
So the, there's, there's, there's quite a bit of funds accrued in, in parcel tax revenue that need to be spent, and the decision or the, the direction of the, the board yesterday was to have our, our library commission work with various stakeholders to come back with some proposals for the use of that parcel tax revenue, which is exciting.
So, so I attended, there was a, I don't, this is only Tuesday, so it must have been last week. There was a, an event co-sponsored by Silicon Valley Community Foundation and Destination Home about, I, I would describe it as mythbusters around housing. It was actually very informative and useful. I think I was the only one there. There were a number of council members, and Assemblymember Lowe and Assemblymember Berman were there as well. The presenter is a professor at University of Washington, did an excellent job. So I should scan, he had kind of a CRIP sheet, four pages. I should scan and maybe have the city manager share with my colleagues, because it was useful. It was statistically based, which is always nice when something is factual. So that was good, and that's the main thing I'll stick with now since it's getting late. City manager.
We forgot one more thing.
What's that?
The pickleball ribbon cutting.
Oh, we were all there, though.
Yeah, I thought I would let you announce it.
Oh, yes. We were all at pickleball ribbon cutting.
What's the matter?
And, yes, and so, and that was great. I'm glad everyone's able to play and happy about that. And there were probably some other things. Oh, there's going to be a ribbon cutting on Thursday for momentum cycling during farmer's market. I, too, will be at Arden Wine and things like that. City manager, did you have anything?
Nothing to report, Mayor.
Okay, then I'm going to adjourn this meeting.
Yes.
What's my prize?